All right. So we'll begin this Tuesday, November 13, 2018, Board of Select, Groveland Board of Select Meeting at 6:30. And if you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, public comments, seeing as there's none, we'll move right along to the warrant approvals. So motion to approve payroll, payroll warrant 19-19 in the amount of $193,261.90.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Motion to approve bill warrant 19-19 in the amount of $295,821.98, which breaks down as follows. Town $47,842.17, water sewer $58,852 even. Payroll withholding $22,753.87. Light bills $32,864.40. Grants revolving $20,588.57. Chapter 90 $26,740.40.
Could you do the health insurance and the light bill over?
Health insurance, yes, health insurance, $32,864.40. And light bills $86,913.57. I think I missed, uh...
Missed health insurance?
I missed one of those.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Terrific. Okay, next on the agenda is to recognize one of Groveland's outstanding residents, Russell Tyne. Is Mr. Tyne here?
Right here.
All righty, front and center. Yeah, that would be great. So, Groveland, to honor Russell Tyne, be it resolved in this day, November 13, 2018, Groveland Board of Selectmen would like to join with all of the employees and residents of the town of Groveland in honoring Russell Tyne and his retirement, and to thank him for his dedication and many years of service to the town of Groveland. Russ served the town with honor for more than 20 years. Russ began his employment with the town of Groveland on October 11, 1998, as a call firefighter. Over the last 20 years, Russ has responded to thousands of calls, both fire-related and medical, and has helped countless residents. During his tenure with the fire department, Russ also served as the treasurer for the Groveland Firefighters Association. Russ retired from the fire department on October 31, 2018. Russell, your dedication to your position and to the town will never be forgotten. On behalf of the town of Groveland, the employees and the residents, we give you the community's heartfelt thanks and best wishes for continued help and happiness to you and your entire family. Congratulations, serving your retirement, and may I be the first to thank you on behalf of this board and the residents for your outstanding and honorable 20 years of service to the town.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
You're quite welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Twenty is, is there a secret to your success, Russ? Is there a secret to your success in longevity? Can you impart that to your fellow firefighters?
I wish I could come up with a snappy answer to that, but I...
It's walking the dogs. You gotta walk the dog every morning, 5:30, right?
Yeah.
Tool.
So there's gonna be a must for all the firefighters, get a dog? All right, so we're moving right along with the appointments of Ms... Oh!
We have training, so we're gonna...
You have training?
Yes.
Well, train good.
I'm gonna make sure to do it right.
We're all, no, listen, you guys go train, we never know when you'll be called to duty.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, good luck. Thank you.
Well, that place emptied out pretty fast.
All right, we ready to move along? Okay, we'll move to the appointments. We have the appointment of Ms. Laura Lee S. Palmila, Palmila, of 290 Ashbury Street, Hamilton, Mass., as a Reserve Dispatcher, Reserve Officer through June 30, 2019.
Make a motion to appoint Laura Lee S. Palmila, 290 Ashbury Street, Hamilton, Mass., as Reserve Dispatch, Reserve Officer through June 30, 2019. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as none, all those in favor? Terrific. We have appointment of Mr. Robert Arkalian, 156 Main Street, Groveland, as the interim Highway Superintendent effective November 13, 2018. Mr. Arkalian will work on an hourly basis at a rate of $43.70 an hour until a successor has been appointed. Hours per week are expected to vary, however, it is estimated he will work, on average, eight to 10 hours per week.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Bob Arkalian, interim highway superintendent, effective November 13, 2018.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
I actually have a quick question. So how are we doing with the new hirer? Are we interviewed yet or not?
So I have interviews scheduled for next week. The position is open until filled, but I have preference to those who applied by last Friday, the 9th. I received, I think, 11 or 12 resumes.
Oh, wow.
I have six scheduled to be interviewed initially.
Wow.
So it's a good, good sample size.
Yeah, and, and we have five very strong candidates with similar experience, so I'm hoping that from those six, I can narrow it down to however many you want to meet, three or two.
Terrific.
Denise, sorry, I'm sure you put the posting online, but could you send me a copy of the...
Sure.
Thank you.
We have a little bit of time.
Can I, there was a motion in a second. We never actually took the vote.
Yeah, we actually did take the vote, and then Bill...
Oh, I'm sorry.
He asked the question.
I didn't realize he voted, okay. So...
It was your deal, Denise.
Okay.
As I said, we have a few minutes, so let's jump around here a little bit.
Can we do the Elm Square thing?
I think that might take a little bit longer than what we have.
Really? Because we have 20 minutes.
Uh, 20 minutes can get eaten up, no problem. How about the security camera expansion project that should take?
Or the vote, you could do the two votes and get them off the table if you wanted to do those.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's a great idea. Cemetery Reserve Fund Transfer Request. So that was... Cemetery Commissioner is looking to transfer $825.38 for parts, unforeseen repairs to cemetery truck.
What are we doing?
The votes.
It's a...
They are to Reserve Fund Transfer Request.
Yeah.
What page is that on? My pages aren't numbered.
It's towards the bottom.
There you go.
Um, sure, sure. Doesn't look like a budget buster.
No, it, what it is, is that we have spent an exorbitant amount of money trying to fix all the old machines we have, and that comes under, it's gonna be all relabeled, it's kind of a misnomer pos, it should be really maintenance and equipment maintenance, so we can keep track of what we're doing. And that's what it has been coming out of, and we didn't realize how bad the truck was. Went to get a sticker, and it failed miserably. So we had to spend the money, get the front end done and everything else, but at the same time, we didn't know when it was tuned up, there were no records when it had an oil change, so we, we had to get that done, you know, because that's the only vehicle we have.
Sure, sure.
And that's why we only have like $256 left in that account.
I'd make a motion that we accept the Cemetery Reserve Fund Transfer Request.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Go fix the truck, hopefully it'll last a while. We have a request from the Highway Department, Reserve Fund Transfer Request as well. This is for $2,899 for road machinery expense, air compressor failure at the highway garage. Is this a, do we know if this is a new piece of equipment, is this a replacement or repair?
It's a replacement, the air compressor died about two weeks ago.
It's a full replacement, okay.
Yes.
So my only question about this would be, so it looks like either the purchase or the estimate is from NAPA Auto Parts, because it's less than $5,000, there's no requirement to, but I'm assuming that there is some due diligence around making sure that we're getting a good price on that?
They usually, Billy usually checks all of his local suppliers for equipment, and as you'll see, the original price was $6,800, it's on sale for $2,899 for this compressor.
$6,800 to $2,800? Why, too?
Yes. You don't need to.
Okay, I would make a motion that we approve the request to transfer funds for the Highway Department, that we do the Highway Department Reserve Fund Transfer pursuant to the request filed on November 7.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Oh. I guess we're supposed to...
What can we recently take up? Well...
We could do...
Let's give it a shot.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be very...
Okay. Uh, let's bring up the Elm Square Committee for their final report on the gas station property, if they're ready to, to give the report.
And I left you all, Mike had sent over another document today that I left with all of your place settings.
Oh, this is an addendum to the original, um...
Yes, correct.
Good evening, Mr. Dempsey, how are you tonight?
Yes. Mike Dempsey for the Elm Square, Groveland Elm Square Committee. And so our committee met one more time after your meeting and put together a summary of what we found regarding our tasks. Our tasks were to determine if we could purchase the property or somehow acquire it in the center of the square and work towards improving it, look at funding, et cetera. So we did quite a few of these tasks, we contacted the owner, we got an appraisal for the property, contacted state officials, worked with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, we attempted negotiations with the owner, and also worked with Essex County Greenville with that, and two. One thing that we found that kind of stopped us in our tracks was the property was appraised, and when we looked at it more closely, we found that there was no guaranteed entry to the property. When the bridge was built, it seems that the former owner was compensated for most of her property and left with very little value due to the lack of entry into it. So even though there is currently entry now, we're not, we couldn't guarantee that someday the state wasn't gonna come along and put a barrier up and close that driveway off, and the driveway on the other side of the post office belongs to the property next door. So finding that out, we didn't think that the property was worth anywhere near what the appraisal could have been. So that's why we had it on the town meeting warrant, but decided to pull it because we couldn't really come to an agreement with the owner of what the property was worth. And so what happened after that was that, you know, we tried to pursue, tried to pursue with the state what indeed was given to the owner, the former owner of the property as far as access, but we couldn't find that out. And in the meantime, the owner decided to sell it to somebody else, so that's what happened, unfortunately, because the property still sits there and it's quite an eyesore, so I think that, you know, it's unfortunate unless the current owner decides to do something with it. But in the meantime, our conclusions were that, you know, that, that part of the square is still sitting there, but there's a lot of other issues that came up while we were looking at that property, such as the lack of parking in the square, no access to the river, and also the square businesses seem to be suffering because of the lack of parking and a few other issues related to that. So the committee would like you to consider continuing an Elm Square Committee, be it this committee with these members, or, you know, if you want to request for new members, but we put together a list of a new charge for the committee that would include inventorying the properties and businesses, working with the town planner to document some kind of plan for improving the square and businesses in the square, look at some kind of solution for the lack of parking and access to the river, and also the look of the square, and give this committee a limited life of, say, two years, and come up with some kind of list of suggestions and plans, how to put that together. I spoke with Rebecca, the town planner, and she's putting a grant together that would require some kind of input in committee, so it kind of makes sense that, you know, if we can continue this along these lines, that we're kind of a step ahead.
Is that the question with Selectman Wood?
Yeah. Where do I start?
Any way you want.
What else are you looking to do in the square? What other purviews do you think that this committee would actually be tasked to look at?
Well, I think we found that parking is the biggest problem, and so...
Right, but you can't create more land, so...
No, there's no easy solution for that, but there are solutions, and, you know, we'd have to look at them more closely, what other towns are doing, what other local areas have solved problems like that.
Well, and I've said this before when it comes to the square, is that if you go back to, what, '86 or so, it was ripped up, redone as a Route 97 project, and then six, seven years later, it was ripped up, right? The Elm parks, the Elm trees were put back, that whole center thing was redone, and then it was ripped up again, what, seven, eight, nine years ago, to redo the, the traffic flow, and then it was ripped up partially again to do the bridge, right? So are we looking at doing something where we're gonna rip up something else to fix something that was done poorly the first time, or are we just looking to put some paint on something to make it look nice? What is this grant that Rebecca's chasing tied to? Is it tied to certain types of projects? Is it just open-ended grants to do beautification in the square? What does that, what does that mean?
No, it's kind of the same idea as studying what options exist and how to best improve the look of the square and also businesses. You know, I think your board has talked about improving the business environment in town, and that's a big part of it.
But I think that's more tied to some of the bylaws in the town.
Like, you're talking about zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there may be some effect on that, too, I don't know.
So the, the square is relatively finite in its area, right? There's not a lot that can be added to the square, other than some beautifications, though, correct?
Well, it depends how you...
I mean, you can't expand the square.
It depends how you define where the square is. Unfortunately, Rebecca isn't here tonight to address those kind of things.
Right, but that's kind of like defining what is-is, right? I mean, the square is pretty much finite, you know when you're in the square. There's, what, a square 200 yards, maybe? And that's being generous. So I'm just saying that there's not a lot associated with the square, and the only rundown area of the square was, for me anyways, was the, the old gas station and the, the post office area. I think everything else looks pretty good. That kind of strip mall area was redone, prettied up, that looks nice, right? The Elm Park area with the Elm trees and the, the monuments and the gazebo, that looks nice. I'm assuming at some point the sidewalks will be redone to, you know, get it to par with ADA requirements, but I just, I just don't understand what else we're gonna be looking at for the square. And I really don't want to look at something that's going to cause a lot of traffic issues in the square, again. I mean, if you look at 4 o'clock and you're coming down 97, it's all the way up to hell, which is crazy, because there's only one light, right? But only certain amount of traffic flows here and stuff. I'm just, I'm asking because I'm wondering what this is gonna, what do you see this looking like?
Well, I, I think it's more about encouraging more business in the square, you know, there's a lot of empty storefronts.
Yeah, some other businesses have left, right?
Right, right, and what kind of businesses maybe fit in, perhaps don't require huge amounts of parking, things like that.
So I can actually comment on the grant. So Rebecca has applied for technical assistance grant in the amount of $15,000 to review the economic conditions of the downtown area, specifically to analyze the market conditions and to assess the potential for new business development and revitalization activities. The specific scope is to conduct a real estate overview, identify downtown characteristics, business composition assessment, comparative business mix analysis, and then involve the business stakeholders and get some input regarding new commercial development, conduct a market assessment, and provide a summary of recommendations. As part of her grant, she's identified working with the planning department, the open space and trails committee, the planning board, and myself as a conduit to the Board of Selectmen. So that is what her grant will focus on, if she does receive it.
Pretty comprehensive, but doesn't include...
I don't know that this grant would focus on parking, but...
Oh, like I said, they're not making more land.
Well, I think it's pretty open-ended, though. I mean, I think at this point, it's an exploratory, it's a, it's a technical, I don't think it is concrete in terms of, part of it is the exploration of what the possibilities are.
Right.
Are you all set for Selectman Wood?
Yes.
Selectman Wood confident?
So I don't see any downside to any of the ideas that you propose. I mean, I think this is all value-added, if it gives us more information to make informed decisions, particularly if we do in fact get a grant. And even if we were not to get a grant, nothing, your, your group, I mean, nothing can actually be implemented or changed until it comes before the board anyway. So this is really just a win-win for us, for you as a committee, to do some of the research around things that might make the Elm Square area nicer. And I think we do have, you know, several businesses right now that are vacant, so I think that insurance, that is not occupied yet, correct?
Yep.
So I would be in support of this, because I, I don't really see a downside. It's not like we as a board are expending resources, this is a volunteer committee that's doing the work.
Selectman Dunn?
Well, number one, I know that I had looked into that project down there prior, and I do believe, maybe I'm wrong, but I had spoken to someone in the Senator Tarr's office, or Senator Tarr was involved in that whole bridge thing, and I understood that the post office was to be torn down, possibly, and the insurance company was gonna get access 20 spaces once that building was gone to get access in there, and that was kind of the negotiations that went on during that whole bridge episode, and that, you're right, the sidewalk is supposed to be brought across where the cars are now going in and out. So, I mean, that building being sold, who it got sold to, and them not relaying, or the owner not relaying that possibility, shame on them. Parking downtown Groveland, I, yeah, there is some areas we need more parking, agreed, but I sat, I sat on the zoning board, and I would question people that would come before the zoning board and say, what's going on? Why, you know, why are you changing the, the old TV place to residential? And his argument was, listen, I cannot get the rent that I can get for residential, that I can get for, you know, commercials, much less than residential, so I'm going residential. And, you know, that was his argument, he said, I can't, I can't even get anyone to rent this place. It's been rented for over a year, I've had it rented, and I can get someone for 500, 400, but yet I can take that area and make three apartments out of it and get more money. So that was his argument. So I think that, you know, I would love to see downtown stay a business place, 100%, and whatever we could do to help. I definitely think that we have a new town planner, and I definitely think we should let her look into the grants or whatever we're talking about, because she, she just got on staff, and I know she has experience in other towns, I think we should let her do her due diligence, and hopefully we can get her to come back with some information for us. I know snow's an issue, I know downtown, in the wintertime, I had one person call me when I was just doing this business thing, that we take the snow out of there a couple times, right up to Christmas, but then sometimes we don't get it out, and a lot of there complaints of snow, you know, and I know the town, the town's usually pretty good about getting the snow out, you know, but, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I would definitely be opposed to paying too much money for a building, which we, you know, that is landlocked, and, and without knowing all that information in front of me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote to purchase something or turn into a parking lot without having all that information in front of me. So, and again, I think that we definitely wanted a town planner, we got a town planner, that's her job, I mean, that's what her job is to do. Let her take a good look at downtown, let her look it all over, and I'm sure she'll come back to us. We gotta give her some time, I'm sure, to work on it, though.
Great, I'm going to have to suspend this discussion for the time being, we'll have to come back to it. It's roughly 6:59, about 7 o'clock, so we're gonna have to open a public hearing with regards to the tax rate, the tax levy for 2019. So I see it's 7 o'clock. So, do I read the notice at this point?
Read the notice, then you need a, a motion in a second.
Right. So notice is hereby given to the town of Groveland taxpayers that a public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, November 13, 2018, at 7:00 PM before the Board of Selectmen on the addition, on the issue of adopting tax levy percentage rates for fiscal 2019. The Board of Selectmen, upon hearing data relevant to the fiscal effects of the available alternatives and upon recommendations made by the assessors, will decide whether the town will continue with one tax rate for all classes of property. town will continue with one tax rate for all classes of property or adopt multiple tax rates. The public is welcome to attend and give comments. Um, we need to go have a roll call.
Need a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
We have a motion-
Second.
We're in a second. So, a roll call, Selectman Wood?
Yes.
Selectman Carpenter?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Watson?
Yes.
Selectman O'Neil is also affirmative. Um, we now, uh, would like to invite the Board of Assessors to present their information. We'd have the Board of Assessors here.
Phil is on his way. The board met end of October and voted on their recommendation. Just maybe ask if he can put over. He was having this, so he'll be walking in momentarily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I tried to make it a little bigger.
Oh, no, it's not the fog. It seems like a foreign language.
No.
I'm Debbie Webster. I'm the office manager for the Board of Assessors. I'll give you a moment to look that over, just so. Basically, what you're looking at is the first page is a scenario that if we did shift the tax rate, the arrows where I highlighted would be the percentage shifts in how they would change the tax rates for both residential and then commercial, industrial, and personal property, what we call CIP. So, there's, uh, running from having no shift, which would be just one, to a one and a half percent shift. The second page is basically, um, part of what we call the recap sheet. It's the form that we will do once you vote on whether or not to keep a single rate or to have a multiple rate. Uh, so that's just to print out those next two pages, or just to print out, just so you can see what it looks like. That will be submitted to the Department of Revenue, um, when we do submit the tax recap for setting the new tax rate. The last two pages, well, actually, four pages, 'cause it's double-sided, is just a summary of the tax recap sheet as it stands now. It has not been submitted, um, so the numbers could change. That's a proposed tax rate that you see on the, um, first, uh, page that's got shading on it. It shows a tax, proposed tax rate of fourteen thirty-five. But I do caution, that's just a proposed rate. There is a good chance that could change, based on any input that the Department of Revenue has when they review our entire, um, recap sheet when it gets submitted. The board did vote, as I said, uh, I believe they met October twenty-sixth. They met as a board, and, uh, their recommendation was to stay at one tax rate. The reason being is we still do not have that much commercial, industrial, personal property accounts. The residential accounts are ninety-two, almost ninety-three percent of the tax base. So, as the numbers you see on that first page reflect, just a small savings, uh, for a shift is a huge increase for people who have commercial accounts.
May I just make a comment, just so that people who will watch this at home? So, the estimate right now is fourteen thirty-five for the, uh, the single tax rate. Um, if you look at that first page, if you shifted that to one, one point three, the residential rate would go to fourteen oh-two, and the commercial rate would be eighteen sixty-six. If you did the one point five shift, it would be thirteen eighty-one for the residential and twenty-one fifty-three for commercial. So, that's what she's referring to. That's not just huge savings on the residential side, but it does increase dramatically on the commercial side. So, those are the rates that she's referring to. If you see, do you all see that on that first page?
Yeah, I did do just a rough calculation, just so you can put it in numbers, I mean, as far as tax bill. The average tax bill in town this year was gonna go up about two hundred dollars. The average, and that's based on the average single-family home, not, I mean, we have condos, we have apartments. I'm just talking about, this is a majority of our properties are single-family homes. Um, so, the average of that is four hundred and twenty-six thousand for fiscal nineteen, it was four hundred and two thousand for fiscal eight, eighteen. So, the values of the property have gone up. Last, uh, this year, with the average of four twenty-six, with a proposed tax rate of, uh, the fourteen thirty-five, the average tax bill would be just breaking the six thousand dollar mark, we just, this first time, uh, of six thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars would be the average. So, obviously, if your home is assessed more, it, it's gonna be higher, and if your home is assessed less than that average, it'll be a little bit less. But it, this increase of the two hundred and some-odd dollars is about on par of what we've been running from year to year. Our tax levy, which determines the taxes paid, uh, goes up about a half a million dollars a year, pretty consistently. Um, and a good portion of that is the school, uh, 'cause they are the biggest budgetary item that we have. Uh, we have made up some of that shortfall with increased in revenues on the excise side, the fees permitting. Um, so we have had some offsets to that increase. So, without that, the, the increases would be much more. But our other revenue, besides our real estate taxes, has gone up, um, nicely, to kinda keep that within a manageable amount. Can't guarantee that's gonna happen every year. But, like I said, if we did shift the one point one, uh, the average single-family home with a one, a one percent shift would save forty-seven dollars for the year. A one percent shift to the commercial property would cause their tax bills to go up eight hundred and twenty dollars. So, it's barely insignificant savings on the residential side, and it does impact the commercial base quite significantly. So.
What was the resident, what was the tax rate last year?
Fourteen sixty-nine.
And we're, and it's being proposed at fourteen thirty-five?
Yep. And taxes are going up. Yep, people are confused by that. Part, you can't just look at tax rate. People make that mistake all the time. They get a, they see in the newspaper a listing of all the tax rates for all the communities, and they're like, "Oh, my God, Groveland's much higher than," I think, like, one town meeting, somebody said Cambridge. And I'm like, "If anybody knows Cambridge, yes, their tax rate was lower than ours, but their average single-family home at the time was over a million dollars." So, they have one of the highest tax rates in, in the Commonwealth. So, you can't take one piece of it. So, algebra, tax levy drives the tax bills, what we vote at town meeting. Plain and simple, that's it. Values of your house going up and down does not affect your tax, what you pay. Now, if you put an addition on and do something to boost your value up above what we increase it or decrease it based on sales, okay, that's not gonna change how much you pay. What that does is if you use your algebra, 'cause this number's a fixed number, as your value of your homes go up, the tax rate goes down, but we still have to collect this. If the values of the houses drop, we still have to collect that, tax rate goes up. So, we have, uh, we have to operate within two and a half. People say, "Well," get, also have the misunderstanding that two and a half means that you can't increase individual tax bills two and a half percent. That's not correct. We cannot increase the levy amount, the amount we have to raise from taxes more than two and a half percent, plus new growth, plus any debt excursions, plus any overrides. That's where two and a half comes in. What happens is your value gives you the piece of pie. You want your value correct. That's why we do the inspections we do. Most of the time, we, we're not let in, but we do those inspections to be fair, because if we don't have your property correct, then you're not paying your fair share, and somebody else is paying it on your behalf. So, our goal in the assessor's office is to try to have the property record cards as accurate as possible. We base the values, not on guessing games. We don't look at what people are listing them for, we don't look, project forward. We do a historical analysis on all the properties that have actually sold. What were their sale price? Were they arms-length sales? If they are, they go into the mix. We do a statistical analysis. We bring up that class of properties, we have many different classes of properties. We have many neighborhoods, based on whether you live on a main road, whether you live in a subdivision, whether you would live in a rural area, whether you live in a more built-up area, heavily trafficked area, and they're all split. And sales that are appropriate for those classes, we do the math. There, the homes are selling higher, we bring the values up. They're selling lower, we bring the values down. That's what we do. So, we track every sale in town, every, every property that's sold. So, did you wanna add anything to it?
All right, is there anyone, um, from the public that wishes to, um, step forward and speak on the matter? Okay. Uh, well, I'll turn the question over to the, uh, Board of Selectmen. Selectman Watson, did you begin to, for us, any questions?
No, I'll, uh, I'll concur with the, the Board of Assessors that we ought to, uh, keep it the way it is.
Selectman Dunn?
Keep it the way it is.
Selectman Carpenter?
Maintain it. Cigarette?
Selectman Wood?
Stay the same.
Um, I just have one question. There's a new school coming down the road. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. Um, are we doing the maximum allowable by law for the folks that'll be most impacted by this? I mean, the seniors, the people on fixed income, to lessen the impact as much as possible on them?
We have every available exemption allowed by law on our books, including the work-offs, which not all towns have. Um, the problem is, they are geared towards lower income, and I understand the people who are on fixed incomes, um, it is difficult, especially if, you know, two hundred dollar increase, if people are just on social security is already, probably a burden that they don't like to hear. Um, with a new school, you know, it, that's, that's a moving target. I don't think anybody really has a hard set number yet. I mean, all depends on the state reimbursement, you know, then how they calculate our share, what our current population of students is, what will be Groveland's share.
Right, that, I mean, that's-
Yeah, so-
We all understand that.
Yeah, so, so as far as the, you know, what we're doing for tax relief, um, we're pretty much doing everything we can until the state changes the income limits, 'cause the income limits are pretty severe. Uh, that's why we initiated the work-off, 'cause the work-off, you can make much more money. Um, under the current exemption, uh, rules, clause forty-one C, which gives you a thousand dollars off your taxes, is, um, twenty thousand if you're single, and thirty thousand if you're married. But there is a social security, a small social security exemption, so you can actually make a little bit more than that. Don't recall the number off the top of my head, but, um, I always tell people to apply for the higher exemption. The worst that's gonna happen is they won't qualify for it this year, and, but just because you don't qualify for it this year doesn't mean you won't qualify for it next year. I always tell people, we send out a little chart with the Council on Aging newsletter every fall, and it lists all the potential exemptions, and, uh, what the income limits are, if there are any, and what the filing requirements are. Most of our exemptions in town are our veterans.
Do you know what the percentage of the population that takes advantage of those?
Very small, 'cause demographically-wise, I mean, income-wise, even amongst our seniors, I, I mean, don't, I'm not, they're, you know, we don't have a lot of that information. The Department of Revenue does, but that's why our EQVs are high. We don't have a lot of-
So, we don't really know, of those residents that are eligible, how many take advantage of, of the full benefit?
No, and we have very few that participate in the work-off program.
Right. And at the higher income limits. We never fill the slots. We haven't filled the slots in the last five years, I think.
At least since I've been here.
Yeah, I think before that, we were filling them, but a lot of our elders who did qualify under, uh, under that have, you know, either become too frail or, or have moved or died, um, because they were the last of our elders that, like, maybe just one, one, uh, the husband only worked his entire career, they were only on social security, they didn't have any other pensions. A lot of times, the other pensions is what kicks them over. A lot of people now have multiple pensions, either municipal, state, company pensions that people are collecting now, um, and on top of their social security, it puts them over the limit for a lot of the exemptions. So, a lot of our seniors do not qualify.
Hmm, I, I've witnessed firsthand, uh, people on fixed income, so I just wanna make sure that the maximum allowable by law, we, we, that we, we're giving the, those people that would be most impacted.
The state keeps promising to change the limits, but it hasn't happened yet.
Well, they've got a billion dollars of surplus this year, maybe we can get them to change this year.
And as Debbie said, you know, we do encourage, anyone who comes in here and asks about it, we encourage them to apply, um, but I haven't really seen many more people applying this year, either, so.
No, no. The most that we're getting, the increases in, is our veterans, 'cause we're seeing more and more veterans come in. It would, it's, you have to have a disability in order to get it. Uh, New Hampshire's different, and you just have to be a veteran. But our, um, our veteran exemption runs anywhere from four hundred dollars off your taxes to a thousand, depending on your percentage.
Right.
Uh, our, our veterans' work-off, which a lot of our veterans may not be aware of, uh, is open to all our veterans, and they can earn up to a thousand dollars off their taxes. We raised that at the last town meeting, so.
Right. I wonder, can we, I wonder if we could set up a workshop on a weekend or a couple of successive weekends to help these people? Maybe they don't know how to fill out the paperwork, or they don't know what to do, and we could help them through it, just to make sure that everybody that, that is eligible and can get this benefit, we make sure they get it.
I think a lot of it, too, is people just don't want to because of the privacy thing. They don't want to disclose their income. A lot of people are very, you know, hesitant to do that, and they have to in order to get it. The only thing I can say about that, and I always encourage people, is actually the only ones that see that paperwork are myself and the board, if they so even want to look at it. Sometimes the boards will just rely on me, that I've gone through the paperwork, I've checked it off, I tell them that they do qualify, and then the board will vote on it, because they, they, they know people are sensitive to that. And then, that paperwork doesn't, that is not open, that's one of the few things that is not open to public record. Uh, if somebody comes in and wants to see your application for an exemption, they're not gonna see it. And that's why I'm very hinky about my office. I keep them all locked up, I don't like to keep them out. I, I, I do understand it's people's sensitive information. A lot of times, I won't even keep it if I don't have to. I'll look at their original paperwork, and I'll let them walk right back out of the office with it, you know, 'cause once I view it, I jot it down, what I need to know to remind me what I looked at, and then I'm done with it. So, to reassure people, you know, 'cause everything in-town government is-
Typically.
Typically, typically, open to public inspection, but not this.
Well, well, hopefully, people will not be surprised and take advantage of that, because at this time of the year-
Yep.
I hate for people to have to choose between heat and heat.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, it's, it's not a pleasant, uh, decision, so I, I thank you for that.
If you think you get it, I, I'm, I'm the one that usually, the first one they talk to besides the treasurer-collector, so we, we get it firsthand, believe me. Um, so we understand the hardships that, and I know of the people personally, that it affects.
We all do, I just wanna make sure we try to mitigate those-
And it's painful.
As best as possible.
Because Massachusetts doesn't have a lot. They do have stuff, but, like I said, it's fairly restrictive, and literally, I've had people miss by less than a thousand dollars, you know?
Terrific. Um, I guess we have a motion and a, do we have a motion, or we just have basically a, we can agree to, uh, to move it, so is, uh, somebody like to make a motion to, um...
I make a motion that we accept the tax rate as proposed. Is that the-
Single tax rate.
The single-
Stay with the single tax rate.
Stay with the single tax rate, as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, there'll be a roll call, a vote. Selectman Watson?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Carpenter?
Yes.
Selectman Wood?
Yes.
Selectman O'Neil, also in the affirmative. Thank you for your time and your efforts. It's always-
Single tax rate.
The single...
Stay with the single tax rate.
Stay with the single tax rate as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, it'll be a roll call, vote. Selectman Watson?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Carpenter?
Yes.
Selectman Wood?
Yes.
Selectman O'Neill, also in the affirmative. Thank you for your time and your efforts. It's always appreciated.
Just as an aside, just so you understand the form completely of what's going to be submitted, there's a couple of things on there you don't have to vote on. I just want you to understand what they are. It's called a small commercial exemption. It's for employers that are in town that have real estate in town that we could vote. Typically, that's used when we do shift the tax rate. Where we're not shifting it, it's not as much of a benefit for them. And it's for employers that hire less than 10 people. We get a listing of those every year, but they also have to own the real estate, you know, that they, you know, obviously, that they're getting. And the residential exemption, which is more applicable to, like, the Cape area towns where many of the residents are not residents. They're summer homes. So in communities like that, they have a residential exemption that they adopt. For us, that doesn't really apply, because most of our people who live here are residents. They may be snowbirds, but they usually, this is their, you know, their first home. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. That's also on the form.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to roll call out of public hearing?
Need to make a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:22. Second.
Motion has been made. Any further discussion?
Is it roll call?
Yes, it will be. Selectman Watson?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Carpenter?
Yes.
Selectman Wood?
Yes.
And Selectman O'Neill, also in the affirmative. Okay, moving right along and back to the previous discussion we had with the Elm Square Committee. And I believe, Selectman Dunn, you had the floor.
Yeah, I mean, the last part of it is, I mean, the gas station right now is a very desirable property for people to rent. I know for a fact, I know a gentleman that was trying to put a car detailing place in there. I know the planning board had someone before them. The biggest problem is, is the access to that property. So, that being said, I mean, I don't know. You know, if we're going to form a committee or whatever, or have the committee take off in a different direction, I would definitely like to see at least two business owners on the committee so they can have their input from the business people downtown.
Yes. So that's why I wanted to call Greg Stark up and he wanted to talk a little bit more than what I've said regarding business in the square and business in town.
Greg Stark. I guess I first would like to make a comment to you, Mike, on what you were saying about all the changes that happened in the square over the last several years, town, what they had done with the roads and whatnot.
Yeah, that's not to say that it hasn't been improved. It's to say that there was repetitive construction on the same areas five or six times over the last 25, 30 years.
Well, I don't know if it was five or six times, but I know that I was on the committee for the Bridge and Square Committee when that was going on. And you had a square committee there that was overseeing what was going on while that park was being put in place. And we were driving into Boston, meeting at, you know, with Mass Highway, making sure that that was being built so that it wouldn't have to be rebuilt. And there was a lot of work that was done with that. And you had a committee here that was putting their time into it, trying to make sure that things did go smooth. Granted, it did get rebuilt when they did the bridge, but they didn't have to rebuild the park. You had a lot of volunteers doing their hard work, driving into Boston, doing stuff for the community. And I just took a little bit of offense that, you know...
Wasn't meant to be offensive to you. It was meant to be...
I know, but that's why you have committees, and it's why you have volunteers that are trying to do good work for you. And we were doing it, so.
Right. My point was that when you look at the history of the square and the work that's been done there, it's, we're going to do 97, they redo the road. All right, which took a lot of construction, and a lot of dig up, and a lot of replacement. It took time, and it was frustration, and there was huge divots and everything else that came along with it. And then the committee came down, and they wanted to do the square project to put more grass and trees and the gazebo and the monuments at the end of it, which looked great. But there was also construction there, which hindered traffic and flow and some other stuff.
But that had to happen.
Right, exactly. But then they did the area where the clock is, the traffic flow, the turns, the islands, and the walkways, and the ADA-compliant ramps there, which created more projects and more dust and more construction and traffic flow. Wait a second. And then we did the bridge, which created more constructions, more traffic flow, more problems, and all that stuff. So I'm just saying that it seems like every, whatever, five, six years, there's something else happening down there, something else happening down there. And I'm just wondering, when are we going to do something else now? If we do, or maybe we won't. But there's not a lot of land left to do anything else with that hasn't already been touched and beautified, right?
I understand that. That, just to finish that point off, is that the end of that park was a change during the bridge, part of the bridge project, and was done when they did the bridge and redid the square. So it was nothing we could have done about that last little piece.
No, I'm not blaming you or saying that you had anything that could have been done to it.
But it was as little impact as it could have been. And it was, I'm just saying that it was, you had a committee there that was working for the good of the community, trying to make sure that things were going as smooth as they could downtown. So in that light, I just wanted to talk about a couple of other things. You guys, about a year ago, allowed me, I came up and asked you if I had the permission to go talk with, I was asked by the Merrimack Valley Planning Board, to go to have, they were having some sessions where they were bringing all the other different communities together to discuss, you know, their downtowns and how they can be effective and what they can do with their downtowns. And, you know, I went and represented the town and listened to see what Amesbury and Georgetown and North Andover and Haverhill and every community around us. And I was quite amazed just how progressive each one of those towns were being about trying to improve their downtowns, trying to find out what the communities wanted. And it was very eye-opening to see, you know, the state monies that they were getting in order just to find out. And I'm sure that's what we're trying to do right now. But they, I think, are being even more aggressive about it. Is our downtown got a lot of potential? We have a lot of potential compared to a lot of towns. West Newbury is having a study done just to figure out what they can do with their downtown. They don't have sewer and water downtown that they can improve on. A lot of these towns are just trying to improve what they have. We have infrastructure, and we have a lot of potential. We also have a river right downtown. I'm just, what I'm thinking is that you have a potential here of a lot of individual business people that are willing to be on a committee that is going to try to help improve, not necessarily just downtown, not necessarily just parking, but this could be also inclusive of other businesses in the community. It could be a sounding board committee to help businesses. Yes, we do have problems with snow removal and beautification and other things that a committee should, it should be some committee that the business community can go to. So I don't see what the downfall is, is to have a business community here of leaders that would volunteer their time to help improve the downtown and maybe the rest of the business community.
Mr. Dunn, you still have the floor.
I agree with what you said, 100%. I'm definitely pro-business. And I don't have a problem having a committee like that. As I said before, we hired this town planner. Why move to do anything with, anything major until we have them look at it and possibly put a committee together and have them come back before us and come back with some ideas? What you said about Amesbury, I worked quite a bit last fall on Amesbury. Absolute gorgeous town, completely different layout, way more land, way more roads, et cetera, et cetera, way more businesses. Georgetown, same thing. Whole different layout, more business, more income, et cetera, et cetera. Groveland, our area is small. It's more condensed, so it's harder to deal with. Maybe this piece of land, we could do something with it. Maybe the town planner will come back and say, hey, listen, maybe we should be putting up a building to put businesses in there, you know? That's all I'm saying. I definitely think we should, we should definitely look into that. I agree with you, 100%.
I don't know what all the possibilities are, but I think it's worthwhile.
I think we have the right, we're going in the right step. We got a town planner, and I think that's her job. And I think that's what, you know, we should let her do her due diligence. Granted, we could definitely have a committee do their due diligence and start talking to the business people, involve business people. I agree. The more eyes you put on it, the better off we're going to be. I just don't want to go purchasing something until we have all the answers.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. You folks also put out a survey to everybody in town in the business community, and I'm sure you all looked at it. You know, on these forms, a lot of these business people volunteered their time on them. They said that they'd be more than willing and wanted to be on a committee to help the business community. You know, why not have a committee that's going to help business in town? It doesn't make any sense to me. Why not do it? They're willing to give their time.
Selectman Dunn?
I'm good.
Selectman Watson?
Greg, maybe you can address a question. You were on the committee for quite a while. Whatever happened to that ramp that was proposed to be built onto the bridge from that old gas station property? And I remember seeing a map that it was supposed to be, when they built the bridge, it was proposed to be a ramp that went onto the corner of the bridge, the side of the bridge, was actually right turn only, heading towards Haverhill. Do you remember that?
I've only seen, I've seen all the plans since the beginning, because I was on the committee in the '90s when it started. And all the plans are pretty close to exactly what you've seen. The very beginning plans, they didn't know exactly what the bridge was going to look like. But the formation of the roads were always pretty much the same.
Because it seemed to me that when you were before us a year ago or more, that on those plans, there was a proposed ramp onto that bridge that never got done. I was just wondering if you knew what the story was.
No. There was a... There was, somebody had showed a curb cut going into, I think, the proposed park and parking. Is that the drawing you were talking about that was on the river?
It...
But that was just a proposed. It had nothing, it had no... Nobody knew what was going to happen at that point, so there was...
And the other thing, either one of you of which will want to tackle it. If this committee is formed, and it's a good idea, you get some volunteers, look, get them involved. What's, what do you think about possibly getting that, moving that post office out of there? If you move the post office to a different location? And I know the post office doesn't own property. They lease it, a long-term lease. I don't know, do you know when that lease is up on that post office? Mike, I know you guys have looked into it.
It's a long-term lease, but it's, it can be dropped within six months. So if...
But at this point now, that's privately owned by a person that's not us.
That's correct.
So, really, it's not...
It's not our business.
It's not our business. If they lease it for another 100 years, that's beyond our control.
It's a long-term lease.
Is that?
But it's up to the owner of the property.
That area down there, I know when I use, if I use that post office, I park in front of the strip mall and walk across the street there. And that's really not a safe spot to be crossing. And I see a lot of people do that because it's difficult to get in and out of there. So they park across the street, and it's too close to the crosswalk by the bridge to the intersection to put one there at front of the post office. But people are going to cross the street where it's convenient, and that's convenient for them. They're not going to walk up, hit the button, and walk across. They're going to cross in front of the office. That's really not a safe spot.
I would agree.
I think that's it. Oh, no, I'm sorry. One other question. Mike, when you, in this paperwork here, you say you met with a private investor to investigate partnerships to acquire the property. Members met with a private investor who was interested in working with the town to acquire the property with a long-term plan. We're not able to take advantage of this, unfortunately. Can you explain that?
Yes. We had a person come forward. He was willing to buy the property and then come up with a plan over a period of time to either sell or somehow get part of the property to the town. And he was going to hold the rest of it, the post office area, and collect rent on that, and then eventually turn that all over to the town.
Thank you.
My only one comment is, and it seems to be all over the place, is the lack of legal access to enter and exit. So even if by some odd coincidence or happenstance we happen to acquire that piece of property without a way in and out, it's effectively useless, isn't it? I mean, you can't even use it for parking if you can't legally enter or exit that piece of property. Am I wrong, or is it?
No, that's correct. But I think the idea was that we would enter into some kind of partnership with the neighbor next door if we were to put parking, some parking on that property that he would be interested in allowing access into it.
And if that property were to change hands, would that agreement still?
Yeah, I mean, it would have been some kind of legal easement or something like that.
I mean, I see no problem with forming, you know, an exploratory committee as you've sort of outlined here. If people are willing to put in the time and effort, God bless them. I mean, in my opinion, we never have enough of those people. I would probably like to see the charge more refined, defined, and some kind of time, you know, not just a committee that would go on forever.
No, I think I think...
I think you have two years.
Is it there?
It's towards the end, I think, of the new report.
But, you know, hey, if you have people that want to put in time or effort, I'd like to knock yourself out. I mean, if you can make it better without any cost to the taxpayer, and you want to do that, so God bless you.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow this committee to proceed in this manner with the recommendation that they collaborate with Rebecca, and that perhaps if Rebecca's willing, she be part of your committee. So that would be my friendly amendment to the committee charge, is that Rebecca collaborate with you and be part of your committee. No second?
We have a motion, but...
I'll second that motion.
And we have now a second. So is there any discussion on the matter? Yes, Selectman Dunn?
I would just like to make sure that we put in that we get the business people involved that are down there. You know, that they're included in the conversation. There's no sense in having this conversation if we don't have at least a couple of them. I know Greg would probably be one of them, but I'd like to get a couple of them. And I know that we did send that survey out in that not a lot of people from downtown. I know the dentist, I got a couple of people say they'd be willing to come to a Saturday meeting here, but not, I think there's only seven people out of...
Yeah, I think Greg was the only downtown business that responded.
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, if we just get, make sure we get a couple of the business people involved. We can't guarantee they're going to get involved, but...
Although I do think it's a different charge. Because the previous charge was specifically related to the gas station. So hopefully, the more general charge will make it more inviting.
So should we solicit new committee members and form an entirely new committee?
I think we could put it out there again.
So you did disband the previous committee as of November 1st. So you would either need to reappoint those committee members or look for new... to reappoint those committee members or look for new volunteers, either way.
So we were disbanding? And you didn't tell us?
But Mike was at the meeting.
Yes.
It was before your previous meeting. The board voted to disband the committee as, dissolve the committee as of November 1st.
Oh, that would have been notified.
No, we don't normally notify, but Mike was here at that. It's on our website that says it was voted upon by the Board of Selectmen.
And the reason, the reason being, if, just if you seem like you didn't know, is because that, that committee was, had a certain charge. The gas station was purchased, and that's why that charge was done, so.
I know, it's just communication. I mean, I'm supposedly one of the chair people on it. Somebody call me, tell me.
Again, you had your meeting after the committee was dissolved, which Mike was part of that meeting, so I assumed he would have relayed it to the committee at that meeting. We don't normally notify committee members when the charge is expired.
And it was almost a moot point once the property became sold, that the charge originally was to look into ways to purchase the property from the previous owner, and now it's changed hands. It would have to be a, a new charge. But to Selectman Dunn's point, and I think Mr. Stockey made a good point of it too, maybe we should have heavy on the business side of it in this committee, so that we get a better understanding and feeling of what the business owners are really looking for, so that we can better develop that area to suit those business needs and kind of grow that area. I mean, it would almost make sense to make it top-heavy with those kind of people. Would you agree or disagree?
I think the more the merrier.
And, and my thought is, the first place that we start is who's interested, and then we give preference to business owners.
Well, maybe that's where we start, we solicit, you know
Volunteers.
Volunteers to form this committee. Should begin, and then choose a number.
Yeah. I also want to say thank you, because I know that you put a lot of work into this, and it was appreciated. And I, I hear that maybe it's not a matter of course for us to notify, but I think for the future, we probably could send an email out if we, if we do that, just as a courtesy. And maybe it's not a practice, but I think for people that are volunteering their time, it wouldn't be a bad thing to do.
Yeah, again, Mike was reported at that meeting. I just assumed he was representing the committee at all of our meetings. He would report that back to the committee, so I guess I assumed he was relaying that information back.
Right, but he
I didn't understand that you took that vote that night.
Oh, yes, no, they took the vote that night.
Because I asked that, that night I asked for extra time in order to prepare the report and have the meeting, meeting one more time in order to get the committee to approve that report. And so I was assuming that, you know, you were gonna perhaps take a vote tonight to dissolve the committee.
No, they voted to, well, it was initial motion to dissolve it immediately, and then I think Bill Dunn made the motion to dissolve it October 31st, or November 1st was what was voted on.
I just think you, you know, when you decide to dissolve a committee, you should talk to the committee members first before you just decide to
Your committee member was here having a conversation with us, and I think that's
One committee.
But I, I understand what you're saying, they, we should have, but
But ahead of time, you ask somebody, you know, what's happening with the committee? This is what we'd like to do, this is what we think.
Well, it was on, I think this discussion was on the agenda that
So I think rather than argue about it, I think we can sort of take that input and consider that for the future.
Oh, I, I think clearly it's a, it's a miscommunication. We're all under the assumption that Mr. Dempsey was representing the entire committee when he made his presentation and his plea to extend the committee. We had no way of knowing that he was, in fact, maybe not representing the entire committee's thoughts and wishes at the time. So I apologize if that's happened.
Just communication, that's all.
So, in terms of my motion, I mean, I can modify it to, to say, I would make a motion that we establish a Elm Square Committee, that we resolicit membership, and that it be seven members? Is that about, what do you think in terms of the number of members?
Maybe nine.
Maybe nine? Okay.
I think you ought to probably find out how many you get in first, and then
So, you know, I'd rather start with seven, and if we get a lot of applicants, we could always revisit that and
Or we could say a maximum of nine
Okay.
And a minimum of three.
Okay, that's a good idea. So a maximum of nine, a minimum of three. I would say a minimum of five. Yeah, a maximum of nine and a minimum of five.
Okay.
And that, these are some ideas, and that that group collaborate, again, with Rebecca Oldham, and that hopefully we can ask Rebecca to be part of that committee as well.
Great.
That work? So
Who would send the information to the people?
What's that?
Who would send all the information, like if we can get like a letter to all the business people, letting them know this is happening, and who would do, take charge
Well, I think that Denise would post something, and then, I think Greg has sort of said that he will, am I taking words from your mouth? That you said that you'd make sure that the business owners were aware of their ability to be involved in this?
And run up from downtown and talk to people and
From the downtown?
verbally start the word around.
Okay.
Great. So just to be clear, could you restate your motion so we all know what we're voting on?
So the motion is
That was a collaborative motion.
Yeah, the motion is to establish an Elm Square Committee with a minimum of five members to a maximum of nine members to, whose mission will be to explore some of the options that were identified in this document that was provided, and in collaboration with the town planner, town planner Rebecca Oldham. I think that's it.
Okay, the only problem I have with the motion is some of the things here is very vague. How about if we amend that to, to a specific charge to be named at a later date, so that we're, we're very specific on what it is and not vague on some and some not, so
Well, so what I added was to explore, explore what options are available, but maybe they come back with a mission statement that they propose to us. Because I'm not, like, this is
Might be want to be inclusive, so generally.
Right, right. Do you know what I'm saying? Depending on
Yeah, I, I just want
So for now, just leave it generic
I don't like vague language, that's all, it just gets you in trouble.
Could we do what we did before? Could we get the seven people and have them sit, and then we can that night talk about a charge?
That's what I agree with.
It might be nine, it might be five.
But I think it's hard for us to give a specific charge tonight, and I, I don't want to be tied to that.
Right, I know what you're saying. I'm not, I'm not saying a specific charge.
No, no, I'm not saying you are. I, I think, I think you're concerned about it not being specific, right, Phil?
Yes, and then, and then what happens is, because there's no specific charge, committees tend to
Right, but then they
view that as, it's kind of an open area, we can kind of go anywhere we want.
But when the commissions, when the committees establish, we will be asking for the charge within a certain time period, for them to propose what they would be working on.
Denise?
So I would just say, you should have a charge before you're soliciting people, so they know what they're responsible for to be on a committee.
So, no, what they're getting into.
I mean, you guys really should be setting the charge. If you wanted to take their recommendations and set a specific charge, but that's really how we would solicit members to be on any committee.
Wouldn't it be to, wouldn't it really be to improve the downtown business? You can make it vague to that point, but I mean
Well, I think all of this is fine.
Yeah.
So I have no problem with the items on here being the charge. My only concern is that, depending on the interest, whether it would be expanded to be business as a whole and not just the Elm Square area. So that would be my only reservation about just making it this.
So you mean businesses throughout town, not just the square?
Right.
I think that would be a separate committee. I think this should be an Elm Square Committee, just for, to focus on Elm Square, I would say. Because I don't think you want to blur the Elm Square, this proposal then with, because the other businesses in town might not care about access to the river or parking in the downtown area.
Right, but if we took the four bullet points here, the top four bullet points, they're pretty specific. Review Groveland's Historic Business Center. Find solutions for lack of parking. Increase access to river and improve the look of the square.
And I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to be respectful of Selectman Dunn's idea to be more inclusive of other businesses that might want to be involved, and
No, I'm good with downtown.
You're good with downtown?
Yeah, like, I think, I agree with Denise. If, if you're talking about businesses outside of town, that would be another whole thing, because they'd be looking at different things. But this is specifically downtown, so I'm good with that, I'm, that's fine with me.
Okay, all right, so then the charge would be what you've outlined?
The charge would be those four bullet points.
So my motion would be amended to say that the charge would be those four bullet points.
Okay.
And with a two-year time limit.
Do you think these five people are still interested in serving, Greg?
What's that?
Do you think those five people are still interested in serving?
It's four people.
Well, well, five people that sign up.
One and a second.
I had to drop on.
Yes.
Work responsibility.
So
Okay.
So we, we have now a specific motion on the table.
Yes.
And
With a second.
There was an original second from
Are you still second?
I think the motion changed.
The motion has changed.
It did change, so can we reread the motion and, just to be clear?
I can't, but
So, establish an Elm Square Committee, solicit applicants for appointment of a minimum of five to a maximum of nine members, collaborate with Rebecca Oldham to potentially be a member of that committee, and to explore the charge of the four bullet points as outlined by the recommendation by the Elm Square existing committee.
Terrific.
The now-evolved
The now-evolved
So now we have a motion and a second, and further discussion on the matter. Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Terrific. All right, congratulations, good luck.
Well, thank you.
So I will post this on our website, once again, soliciting interest in this committee.
And, Mr. Stark? Once the committee has been formed and the chairman has been selected, please share that with us so we make sure the communication stays the way it should have been. And I apologize if the communication wasn't what it should have been in the past. I don't think it was anybody's intention, just an oversight, which is, we're all human.
Are we looking to have these, the, the committee, the names to select for our next meeting and, and vote on them?
Well, as soon as possible. We have to wait till we get at least five before we can vote on anybody, so, and with Thanksgiving next week
Yeah.
It might not probably realistically take place until after the first of the year.
Right, because we only have one meeting, we only have one full meeting after this, before the end of the year, which would be December 10th, so
I mean, I would think your two-year time limit begins today, the committee's formed, it doesn't start today, so terrific.
Better to do it right.
Than do it in a rush. Haste makes waste, right? Ben Franklin. Thank you again for your time and effort, I appreciate it. Okay, moving right along to the town manager discussion. Selectman Dunn, this was your, this is your
So I had, as everyone knows, I, I went to sit down with the Selectmen in West Newbury. They were, had been in the process of hiring a town manager. Sat down with him for quite a bit of time. He gave me a bunch of information, so I've had forwarded over to you guys. And I think that this town, it's time that we take a look at hiring a town manager, because for a lot of reasons, you need more management. In behalf of the town, you don't have any really point person right now. You have Denise, which is the point person, but that's not really her job or her job title to be the point person. And as I said before, it starts at the front door of the town hall. People coming in the town hall should have someone there that can tell them, you know, I'm here for this reason, and if they can't get the answer, that person will say, okay, well, I'll get you the answer. Well, I'll talk to the planning board, et cetera, et cetera. I think we have a lot of appointed and a lot of elected positions, which makes the town government hard to run. I think it confuses it a lot, right down to our DPW. I think we should have a DPW. We shouldn't even have what we have, because it's not run efficient. I mean, it's run efficient for what it is. I'm not criticizing the DPW, but as far as budgetary reasons and what have you, a town manager has more of his thumb on what's going on, her thumb, his thumb, whatever. So I think it's run a lot more smoothly, right down to the, you know, even contracts, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's kind of rounding it up as best I can for you.
Honestly, I, I think if you replaced West Newbury with Groveland, any one of these documents, everything here applies.
Right.
This is almost a mirror image of what we are today and where we should be. And the other thing I noticed is, if this is right, we're only one of two towns now in eastern Massachusetts that still exist under this kind of structure.
In all of Massachusetts, there's no other finance director form of governments other than Groveland and Merrimack.
Groveland and Merrimack, and West Newbury just turned over. Yeah, they were, were the, were the three white dots on the map.
So I guess, my question would be, if we wanted to proceed with this, Bill, what do you think the next step would be?
Well, I mean, if there's five of us, do we really, are we really in the position to make the decision for the town people by saying we want to hire a town manager? I know we've been talking about doing a survey. I mean, maybe add that to the survey and, and ask the people. You, you know, you, I mean, the people really need to be educated to understand why we need a town manager. I don't think the people are clearly educated at this point.
So would you recommend that we follow the same process that West Newbury followed?
I would, I definitely would, I would. I mean, I think, I think it is, I think, but you also have to have a commitment from this board. If we take this route, it's a lot of work. I mean, in West Newbury, and I think I said this before, each one of those select people over there, they, this one gentleman took on town manager. Another gentleman took on hiring the new highway guide. Each select person has a role, and that's what they work on. So, yes, the select person on the board would take this role on, but also the other select people, we may have to meet on a Saturday, we may have to sit down and have discussions on a Saturday, we may have to meet a few extra times during this process, because there's decisions that you need to talk about and make decisions. So it's gonna be a little bit of extra work on our part to get there, but once we get there, I think this, the town will run better, I think the people will be better served. And, you know, I forget, one of the main, main things on their survey, a lot of people said communications. I mean, a lot of people in the town, we just heard it right here. I mean, it's, a lot of it's communication and what have you. I mean, even that whole thing downtown, that whole gas station that we just talked about, I mean, there's, there's a lot, that's been going on for a long, a long period of time, and, you know, I wasn't saying I didn't want it, I want it to go the right way, but that post office needs to be taken out of there in order to make it good for the town of Groveland. And, and in the interim, the insurance company now gains parking for their business as well. All that was done, it was almost edged and stolen, and it all fell apart. So at any rate, yes, I definitely think we need a town manager, and yes, we're gonna have to, all of us are gonna have to work together to get there, if that's the route we want to go.
Selectman Watson, any comments?
No, it was just interesting the timeframe that it took West Newbury to, to do this. But I, I, I agree with Bill that, you know, that should be part of our survey, is to find out if the townspeople want to go that route. And that's the best way to ask, to, to find out, ask them.
One point, Bill, and just so everybody knows, one of the reasons it took West Newbury so long to get this done was it had to go through legislation. And it took them a long time. I think he told me it took them almost four months to get this through, to get this through the legislation. That was the biggest hurdle. For the most part, the, the surveys and the town people and, and those guys all worked pretty, you know, the time they had to do it, it worked out good, but it was the timing, the slowdown of it was because they had to get through the State House.
Selectman Carpenter?
I'm in support of proceeding. If the next step is to include the questions as part of a survey, I would, you know, support doing that.
Selectman Wood?
Bill, did they, did they work with Lenny and Bruce on the legislative part?
Yes.
And it still took four months?
Oh, yeah. It has to go through a committee and
Well, it's, it's no different than our highway position.
Yeah, I was gonna say that's
Once it gets to the State House
That's typical.
And it was the time of year, too. I believe he told me that when they got it done, it was the wrong time of year, because they might have been in recess, and then they had to pick it up, and they had to go again. And once it went, it went, but he said it was just, that was the slowest part of it.
Right.
And this gentleman, I don't want to say his name on camera, but he said if he, we wanted to have him come into one of our meetings and sit with us and talk with us, he'd be willing to come in, sit down one, Monday night, and give us an overlay of what he did sit down one Monday night, and give us an overlay of what he did and all that, or, you know, if we wanted to sit on a Saturday with him. Anything we needed, he was open to, you know, have us talk with him as well.
I think, I think that's a good idea. I'm in support of the town manager, and I'd like to get more information on some of the qualifications that they have put in place to request that type of person for applications, and then what they ultimately hired as far as qualifications.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in total support of it. I think it's overdue. I, I'll be honest, on the other side of this table a few years ago, I did not understand the need. I couldn't understand the urgency, but now, having sat on this side of the table for the last two-plus years, there is a ever-growing need to streamline our government and make it run more efficiently and effectively for the townsfolk. And it's just so difficult for us, because most of us work. Our livings are made elsewhere, and we're not here to really oversee these day-to-day operations. We have to wait two weeks, in some cases, to make decisions, and that is just too long. I would caution against making, putting a question in the survey such as, "Do you want a town manager, yes or no?" I think it's, I think the answer you'll get is going to be no. I think you have to approach it a different way. For example, do you feel the communication in the town is adequate? Strongly agree, strongly disagree?
They had the whole, they had a whole survey in there.
Yeah, it really was, kind of, they worked down to it, to where you almost compelled you to, after answering a series of questions, say, "Yeah, you know what? After I answered these series of questions, I kind of..."
Educate the people.
"I kind of do need a town manager."
Right, educate the people.
Absolutely.
And the thing is, is if you were right, if you put on a survey right now, if you said you want a town manager, people think, people think cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. You know what I mean? And, and they don't realize what the money is, and what you're paying the finance director, what you could be paying a town manager, you know what I mean?
I don't think they understand the benefits...
And the benefits, right, right.
...they would get by having someone that's in authority 24/7.
Right.
I think you have to also include the cost. Obviously, with a, with a town manager, it's going to, it's going to cost more. And, before the people decide whether, whether they want it or not, they, they, they need to know what it's going to cost. How much additional is it going to cost on their, in the budget, and on the taxes?
Right, as far as you mean, as far as the payroll.
Exactly.
Right. It costs around, I'm not saying payroll, but I'm, I'm saying, I asked this gentleman what it cost him to get to a town manager. He said it was around $6,000, and one of their bigger expenses was they redid their offices. So, what they did is they had to make an office just for their new town manager, because they, he was more in shared space. So, they had to redo some office space, and redo carpeting and chairs, et cetera, et cetera. But, that was $10,000, $12,000 for that. And they, they hired through their highway department and some other stuff. But, they said it was not a lot of money to change their government over. Six to seven thousand.
What was the salary range? Did they discuss that?
I want to say 105 to 110.
No.
No?
They were about 160.
Oh.
But, their finance director was paid well above myself and Merrimack's.
Okay.
Their finance director was paid more than Groveland and Merrimack's finance director, and the town planner was 160. Is that what you said?
No, not the town planner, the town manager they hired.
Town manager, sorry, town manager.
Who's an attorney as well?
No, I don't, no, he's a town, he's a town planner by trade.
Oh, the person hiring West Newbury?
Yes.
Oh, I thought somebody was referencing that somebody was hired that was an attorney and a...
No.
Again, I, I think you, I think you're putting the cart before the horse on, unless you let the townspeople know, if they go this route with a town manager, how much is it going to cost them? And, you know, a lot of people may say, "Hey, the town should go with a town manager." But, if they find out what the cost is going to be, if it, if it's too high, they may say, "Well, hey, look, look, we've got, we've got a possibility of a new school coming up that's going to cost us money. Do we, do we really want to increase the salaries?"
Wouldn't you call it a town, town vote anyway?
Yeah, I think at this, yeah, I think at this point, it's our responsibility to explore this as an option.
Right.
And I would recommend that we, I mean, I'm willing to make a motion that we include questions related to this in the survey that we're standing out, and then we take the next step after we receive the results of that survey.
To move forward in this direction, is what you're saying?
Yeah. So, just take it one step at a time at this point, and not get too far ahead of ourselves.
So, is your intention to make that motion?
So, I make a motion that we continue to explore the possibility of a town manager by including questions as part of our survey to solicit input from community members.
I just don't know how we're going to get them questions in a survey that would not be, it would have to be pretty, I think you'd have to educate the people as well. If, and maybe we can go through here and find one. We can just put the town manager, say, and then educate the people with the points of why we want.
But, maybe we have a meeting...
Yeah.
Welcoming people to discuss, I mean, it's sort of like what they do with the school with the superintendent, when they hire a superintendent. They do these focus groups.
Right, I just think if we put a survey question in, yes or no, people don't know.
Well, I wouldn't put a yes or no question in. I think we can be a lot more thoughtful in how we go about...
Right.
Explaining why we think this might be a good idea.
I believe, I can pick it out somewhere, but...
Because we could probably use some of the language that they use.
Right, there was one in there.
I mean, like I said...
They gave it to the town people.
You take out West Newbury, put in Groveland, and I think everything here applies.
Right, right, right.
So, I don't think this is a stretch to...
So, maybe we just add that piece into the survey? Maybe we add that, we find the piece, and we add it into the survey?
Yeah, I think we could add the, the basis for why we're asking the question.
Right, okay.
Or why we're, we're taking this road.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Yeah, a second as long as we put that in there. Get that piece in there, I just don't want to, you know, not a problem. Survey, not a problem.
We'll approve it, so...
So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Yes, Selectman Wood?
So, the goal is to have a survey, to ask people what they think about a town, a town manager, and then eventually get to a town meeting where they have to vote on it anyways, right?
Right, so this is sort of the pre...
Right, yeah, I get that, but it seems like it's, I mean, I get the survey, and it's, it's great to take surveys and get feedback from the, from the town people, but...
But, there's an educational piece that's part of it, too?
I get that, I get that. Wouldn't it be easier just to send out some educational documentation, short bullet points, than to take a survey and then assess that, and then have them vote on it anyways? It just seems like we're taking more steps to get to the point where they're going to be voting on it. I think the point, I think what we're trying to do is educate the people on why we think they, we need a town manager.
Right, but I also think that people have a right to have input, and if we're not going to follow a process where they have any input, I feel like their voices are ignored.
No, the input is actually the vote they take at town meeting. That's what town meeting is for, so they can...
Right, but not everybody gets to talk at town meeting.
I will say, it also requires a ballot question. A change of government would require...
I mean, I think eventually we're all getting to the same spot. I just, if, if the goal is to educate people, then let's educate them, not send out a survey to ask them what they think about questions that we're, want them to answer on, based on an idea that we're trying to get to. That's just the way I think.
And Mike, I think, I think in this packet, that's what they did in West Newbury.
Right.
I don't think they asked like, yes or no, they were, it was more educational type.
West Newbury conducted focus group meetings. They didn't do a town-wide survey. They put together a focus group of five small groups, leading a 60-minute discussion. So, that's what they did.
I thought they also did a survey.
They did. I know he told me that they even went to, like, the West Newbury Food Market, and they passed out survey things there, and what have you.
Okay, I mean, it says they solicited several hundred residents.
You've got to get it education.
Yeah.
You've got to get the education. I don't think it should be yes or no, as long as we get it educated, I think we're good. I think we're all, like Mike said, we're all trying to get to the same place, but it's just a matter of how we get there.
Can I see that?
You can see anything you want, what would you like?
So, if we follow the process, they started with one of these groups?
It looks like they began with a focus group. Is that correct, Bill?
They started with initial board objectives. What does the board want to accomplish? Do they want to do a charter or a special act? What authority, who reports to the manager? Then they solicited resident input through focus groups and a survey to several hundred residents. Then they drafted the legislation. Then they had outreach forums on YouTube.
The survey was after the forums?
According to their process chart, yes.
Okay, was that in that thing?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that was, November 1st, they started the focus groups, and December 1st, they did a survey. Then in February, they had outreach forums with employees, boards and committees, and the general public, and moved to the April town meeting and May vote.
I mean, to me, I don't know why we would reinvent the wheel. If we're so similarly situated in terms of how our government looks currently and the issues that exist, I would follow this type of template. And, I mean, I think I heard from my fellow board members that the issues that exist in West Newbury are the same as exist here. So, in some respects, in terms of what we want to accomplish, it's the same thing.
It's almost like...
This is the educational, I mean, if you read that real quick, that's kind of the educational piece of it.
So, I guess the vote would be, you know, do we want to adopt the initial board? Do we want to adopt the initial board objectives that were already created in West Newbury, since we are similarly situated? And then the next process would be to develop focus groups. So, I guess, you know, the board would have to decide whether the language that exists in that, again, if we were to substitute Groveland, they are all the same issues. Would we want to adopt sort of the same formula that West Newbury did?
I would say yes, only because it seems to be, have been a successful formula.
My only recommendation would be, if that's the road you're taking, we should be looking at different legislation. Their legislation has no more authority than my position currently.
Right.
Their town manager is actually struggling over there, because he has zero formal authority. So, I think the specific, the specific legislation outlining the position should be redefined a little bit, because it's not what he thought it was over there.
I mean, I think that we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Right.
So, I think that we can, you know, if that's an issue, we can get some input from him, and we can modify that as needed. But, I don't think that that would necessarily change this first part, would it?
No, I, I'm just saying, on this, that would be the, my only recommendation, that you really look at that, the legislation, and take that a little bit differently, because it's...
So, that's the, the step around drafting the legislation?
Yes, correct.
That might need some tweaking.
Correct.
My original thought was that we were going to be doing some kind of, possibly some kind of a survey. But, my, my original thought was, we do something like, we say, "Why should Groveland have a town manager and bullet point it down?" You know what I'm trying to say? What, what, I know it's a lot of paperwork going on for people, but what would a town manager do to help Groveland? You know, that's kind of what I was trying to do. Plus and minus, you know, try to educate, but maybe, this is too soon, I don't know.
Well, I would propose that we review the initial board objectives that were provided by West Newbury and be prepared to vote. So, we should each go through those again and see, is that language consistent with what we want? And if it is, we can take a formal vote on that initial piece. And once we do that, then we can set some dates, action steps, for the next step of resident input. So, I, I would, I would propose that we take the documents that we have right now, review them, see if there's any changes that we want to make, or anything that we don't agree with. But, rather than reinvent the wheel, we can sort of review the language that they have, because again, I think we have similar demographics.
Are you with Gerary, your original motion? Are you amending your original motion?
I think we're molding it as a consecutive motion.
I think I'm withdrawing it.
Okay.
Because it seems that it's out of order, that first we need to do this piece, and then the next piece would be the focus groups and the survey.
Maybe what we, maybe what we should do is have everyone take a look at this, because right here, survey indicates resident want a town manager. And 67% of the survey responded, so they did a survey, so...
Right, but it just, it wasn't the first thing that they did.
I, I agree, but I'm saying, we need to get to the, the first piece of it.
Yeah, so the first piece is deciding what our board objectives are. So, it's using the language, reviewing the language that they had, and making sure that we're okay with it.
Okay.
The second step is, once we vote on that, that their language is language that we would like to adopt, whether we want to tweak anything. Once we voted on that, then we can go to that resident input step and do these other two tasks.
Selectman Wood?
Yes, I think we got this original paperwork from Bill.
Month ago, two months ago?
I think kicking it down to...
Six months ago.
Six months ago. I think kicking it down to another meeting is...
In May, actually, in May.
Probably not necessary, and we can just follow this template loosely, at least, and move it along.
I mean, I'm okay with that, but I just didn't know whether people had looked at it with that eye.
Well, I, for myself, six months ago, when we first got it, I guess, as a timeframe, I read the documentation that's sent over to me, so I'm prepared for the meeting. And then I looked at it again two months ago, or whatever it was, when it came up on the agenda, and I looked at the documents again, so I was prepared for the meeting. And then I looked at it again tonight, because it's on the agenda, so I was prepared for the meeting, so...
So, you want to move forward on accepting the objectives that were adopted by the West Newbury group?
Yeah, I think we move forward and accept the, the outline that's already been invented for us. And then, you know, we leave some room to, to adjust and kind of move as needed.
And I think that's fine, I'd like to sort of...
We use it as a regular outline, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel two weeks, four weeks, six months from now. Let's move.
We have a template.
Yeah, so I'm fine with that. I'd like to get maybe the...
I'm not trying to boil the ocean.
The template redrafted, to replace it with Groveland, that would make me feel better.
You can call it groovy land if you want to, just just move forward.
Do, do you want to make a motion?
I don't even know where to start. Make a motion to follow the template that West Newbury provided us, switching out West Newbury to Groveland. We use that as a guideline to, to move forward with the town, town manager position.
Okay.
Now, we have a motion and a second, and a new motion. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Terrific. And the charter and special act, I don't want this position to ever end up as a paper, a toothless tiger. If that's their problem in West Newbury, we need to give that position the authority it needs to function.
But Denise, but Denise just said it, it's, it's how they adopted their legislation.
Correct.
Right.
And I think...
And they, you have it in here, I think, over and over.
Right, so, so the charter and special act, we don't have a town charter. So, in order to go through the process, that's a whole undertaking altogether, which I do think at some point in time, the town of Groveland should form a charter committee and actually develop a town charter. We would be using the special act approach, which is just like we did with the highway superintendent position. Town meeting, a ballot question, the legislation then goes into the state. Yes, their special legislation formed a very weak town manager and has no form, no more formal authority than a finance director position. And they're struggling over there right now with that, and the person that they've hired is struggling as he tries to maneuver through day-to-day operations without the formal authority. So, that's something that, when this board decides, you know, you could take a job description and then tweak it into special legislation with the help of town council, that would be sort of down the road, defining that position.
And the reason they went the route they went is their finance director had moved on to another job. They were in, in a rush to get, and they didn't want to hire a finance director. They wanted to hire a town manager. They kind of pushed the, it a little too fast and didn't... to hire a town manager, they kind of pushed the, it a little too fast and didn't, so we can learn from their mistakes and, and tweak it on our end.
Let's hope so. Okay, next topic is town survey and topics.
Well, I almost feel like we might as well table that, because if it's going to coincide, we wouldn't do two town surveys. I would say that we should do the town survey when we do, when we have developed, after we've done the forum and include it all as one. Otherwise, we'd be doing two different town surveys.
Well, I mean, can we talk about the topics, at least? Rather, I mean, we know one topic is the town manager, can we just talk about the rest of the topics?
I don't know, she making a motion to table this topic?
Oh, okay.
Um... How long do you think it would take, Bill?
Just to make a, run the list down, maybe three minutes, not even?
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, let me just get into that, and I'll just type them as you guys discuss them.
You want to start at one of the table, Bill, or how do you want to do it?
So you all have Selectman Watson's, he came in and gave me his questions. So I don't know if you want to each make suggestions, I can compile them, and then you can actually go through them and pick a number of them. I don't know how you want to handle it.
I think that might be the best way, if we throw everything into, into a pot and then discuss all of them at a later date, and then pick and choose which ones are the best. We don't want to make it too big, so that people will just ignore it and throw it in the trash. It should be big enough and small enough to add value, but not be cumbersome. So I guess we'll start at this end of the table, if you don't mind, and go with, Selectman Wood?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Selectman Dunn.
So, I was under the impression we're supposed to read these, but that's okay, but I'll read anyway. So mine was to discuss a town manager. Should we purchase the land downtown Groveland at the gas station site?
You can't...
Well, now that's, it's moot.
What's that?
It's purchasing that land at, at the gas station.
Well, I mean, it just came about, but this, this has been in my thing for like two months now, all right? So, so Center Street use, do we want to use it for rec, or do we want to leave it open space? The pines, do we want to use some CPA money to do projects down the pines? Do we want to have a town parade? Do we want a senior center? How do people want to spend CPA money? They want to spend it on town projects, infrastructure, if, if it's possible, or land sales? So there's just a couple of the ones I was thinking of. So I can retype this up and get it over to Denise, or she has it?
I think she's typing it now.
Well, I think she's typing it.
Just, can you repeat, repeat the last one? CPA money spent on, what was the first one? Land sales and what?
Land sales?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, if it could be, and new town projects.
That's a pretty good list. Okay. It's a good list?
Yeah, absolutely.
So if anyone else has any suggestions, you can either send them to me.
Selectman Watson, we have yours, is there anything you want to add?
I'll just read out, I'll just read out just quickly what I got here. Do we need a town manager? I'm on board with what Bill had said. And I added, if you think we, the town should have a town manager, should the, town manager be an attorney to save on legal costs? Another one we had, I had was, should we combine the highway, the cemetery, the water and sewer, the grounds, maintenance and facilities into a Department of Public Works?
Are we doing that?
I, I had another, should we look into electronic voting at the town meeting? And, and then I listed about six capital projects and what people thought was, would be most important. A senior center, a combined senior center, citizen center, used by veterans groups, town organizations, et cetera. A water filtration plant, building upon the fact that we had several meetings ago, we had people in here about rusty water and their filters that they have in their house. Should we put an addition on the town hall for storage space? Storage space is lacking here in the town hall. Another one that came up was a generator for the new addition of the Bagnell School, so that we could use that for a disaster, if it, if it happened in the town of Groveland. The other one was a, a new addition to the, to the library, they're running out of space over there. And I just wanted the people to rank what they thought was most important out of those. Obviously, you can't do them all, but what did they think was most important?
Do you think we should put a price tag next to these? Because that would influence my decision, because I've been in the water filtration business, and a water filtration plant for this town is going to run you about fourteen to fifteen million conservatively.
So I think that's the one where that really applies, and maybe put it on that one. I think the other ones are sort of less known, but I definitely, on that water one, I mean, they told us that when they came.
Oh, for sure.
Well, we have an idea for the senior center, too.
We got an idea for the senior center.
And I was just looking at, at what, what the, what the people, if you're doing a survey, what the people thought was, was important first. Do they think a, a storage space of the town hall is more important than an addition to the library? Or a generator for the Bagnell School is more important than a senior center?
Right.
I just wanted, nothing to do with cost, but what did they think was, was the most important on, on these capital projects?
Again, if I got this, I would check water filtration plant, most important. Once I got the costs, I'd say least important, because I just don't know how we could afford that.
And the other piece of that, it's, it doesn't even apply to everybody in town.
Well, that is, that is, is the problem.
Well, the town manager position was all about cost, but apparently the water filtration, the senior center, the generators, the additions, those don't have anything to do with cost.
Well...
So can I add, if Selectman Watson's done?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Are you all set?
Are you all set?
Oh, yeah.
I would like to add that if we were to pursue a town manager, I think we should revisit whether we need a five-member board of selectmen, whether we would maybe go back to three. And I know that might not be popular, but part of the reason that we had five was because we didn't have a town manager.
No, I think part of the reason we got to five is to dilute the power that was held by such a small board in the first place. The five member, I think, has worked really well in kind of spreading that around.
Representation.
Right, representation is a good word, thank you.
I know what you're trying to get to, but I think, I think the five-member board has more representation of different groups in town.
I think it's added tremendous value.
Can I, was that one of the questions that you wanted to add from my list?
It is, but I don't appear to have support on it.
Okay.
Well, you know, listen, throw it on there, it, it becomes a discussion for all five, not just one or two. And if the board, the majority feels that it's worthwhile and value-added to put on the survey, it goes on the survey. If not, then it doesn't, I mean...
Ask, ask the people. I think it's a reasonable request, I didn't think of that. Thank you.
You're not going to save any cost with going to a three-member board.
I know the, I know the West Newbury select board was hoping with a new town manager that their role would change a little bit, as in not running the government as much, but being there whatever he needed them to answer, but also their role would change where they could do more civic projects, and they can do more outside of their Monday night type thing. That's what they were trying to roll into, a different role.
Right, but if they didn't give that...
Be more hands-on with the people.
If they didn't give that position that authority from the get-go, then they're stuck in the same position they're in now, and I don't want to be there.
Sounds all right.
See, move on. So, and moving right along, the establishment of the Sewell Street redevelopment working group.
So may I start this conversation?
You may start it.
So I had a long conversation with town council regarding this. Their recommendation to the board is that you vote to direct me to investigate and report to the selectmen on what is needed to make this a cooperative project, and to authorize me to seek the assistance of such town officials as we feel is necessary to formulate those recommendations. If you empower me to form this working group, it does not meet the open meeting law requirements. We would be able to meet and have candid discussions regarding this development project, and then could make a recommendation to this board. If you form the committee, then it follows all open meeting law requirements, and town council has advised against that. So they told me to make that recommendation to you all. I would certainly then solicit a board member to participate on that committee. Also, the town planner, the building inspector, zoning board, board of health, et cetera.
Fire and police where, where necessary, and...
Correct.
So I...
I'm slow. So basically, the board, that board would have to meet in, that's going to be in charge, would have to meet, and they...
Would not be subject to the open meeting law.
Correct.
They would not be open, to subject to the open.
So my question about that is, if they're not subject to the open meeting law, does that mean the meetings would not be posted, they wouldn't require the forty-eight hour?
Correct.
Because the concern about that is that people in the community wouldn't get to be involved.
But that's, they shouldn't, according to council, they should not be involved until it gets to this board and you start holding actual discussions on it in public. That that would interfere with trying to come up with a collaborative working process between the town and the developer to come to a cooperative process if you start having too much input and too much public input early on.
Okay.
You're saying it would impede the ability to possibly come to a mutually beneficial agreement between the town and the developer?
And have some candid discussions, yes.
As far as a friendly...
Correct.
Friendly forty D.
Correct.
So what happens if you wanted to turn around and have a friendly, and you wanted to sit down with a developer, and you wanted to have some candid discussions about possibly what could benefit the town, or how it could, can that be done? Could that still be done as a, a board, or has to be done individually? I don't, I'm losing me.
So what, I think what she's saying is there could be a board representative that would be part of that group?
Right.
And you could still have that discussion? It just wouldn't be subject to the open meeting law.
Right, so instead of you all forming the committee, you would give me the power to form the committee, and then therefore, we can meet freely as needed, and then report to the, this entire board with the recommendations of that smaller working group. So there would still be a working group, again, I would still ask if a board member wants to sit on that group. But we can't have a quorum of any board involved, because then again, it would be subject to the open meeting law.
And forty-eight hour notice.
Correct.
And television crews and cameras and...
Well, it depends on the night.
So my, my next question would be, would that group, I, so I'm, I can accept that, and I understand the logic. My next question, though, is I still want to sort of know what's going on. Would that group be putting together meeting minutes?
Probably not meeting minutes, but I could report on a...
Or the board member who was sitting on that would report.
Correct. So myself or the board member could report at each meeting what the progress is.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure there will be working notes and things like that, but it wouldn't be formal, formally posted meeting minutes. It would be just like any sort of internal committee, our redevelopment committee that we have, things like that, it would sort of form, you know, work along those lines.
So do we, tonight, do we vote to appoint a Selectman?
Tonight, we, we vote to appoint Denise.
You would vote to direct me to investigate and report to the board on what is needed to make this a cooperative project, and to authorize me to seek the assistance of such town officials as I feel necessary to formulate those recommendations.
And then you make the, and then you make the request?
And then I would ask if there's a board member that would like to serve on that role.
Just want to make sure I got the order correctly.
And that recommendation is based on town council's...
Yes.
Suggestions that this is probably the most efficient and least conflicting way to...
Yeah.
Yes.
And to cover ourselves, did they put that sort of recommendation in writing?
Yeah, I read for you word for word what they just, that's what he said to me.
So they wrote it out?
Yes.
Oh, because that makes me feel better, too.
Yes.
Okay, so I would make that motion.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll wait until after, there's a second, there's a second discussion.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second. Is the developer been informed of this, and is, are they amenable to that?
Well, as you know, Bill is here, but this is the town forming the working group. I would say he would be amenable instead of having public discussions and publicly posted meetings.
Yeah, that's right. And the whole thing is plenty of time for the public hearings and all that, so it's just to facilitate, to get the rubber out together, so to speak, moving forward. And then there's, there'll be plenty of opportunities for everyone to get involved, just not on scratch.
Okay.
Not down to the granular level that we'll be talking about.
Right.
And I believe the consultant's going to keep the minutes, so there will be minutes.
Okay.
Oh, great.
So we have a motion in a second, any discussion on the matter? Selectman Watson?
I, I'm not fully in favor of that, that idea. I think it should be public meetings, I think it should be televised on TV so that the townspeople know what's going on. It almost sounds like if you don't want it on TV, you don't want a public meeting, you don't want it posted meetings, or what have you, it, to me, it just sounds something little, a little shady behind it. And I, I'm not going to be able to support it. I think it should be public meetings, I know what town council said, but I, I'm not in agreement with, with the way it's going to, they're looking to have it done. I think, I think the townspeople have a right to see, to see how the negotiations is going, and, so I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to support that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed?
Opposed.
So now I will ask if there's any board member that would like to participate.
I'd like to participate.
So Bill and Mike would like to participate.
Bill, which Bill, the two of them?
Bill Dunn raised his hand.
My, my plate's kind of full, so I would, I would really...
I'd like to do it.
All right, so we'll discuss this offline.
So we have a motion to appoint Selectman Wood to be the representative, do we need to do that? Or can that just be...
Or is that something you were going to do?
Well, it would be, but I, Phil was interested as well, so I can talk to you guys.
Oh, I did, I did.
I can talk to you guys.
I'm sorry, Bill.
No, we can talk about it offline.
I didn't...
No, no, but I'm saying, maybe one night you can't go, I go. Can that be done, you know?
Yeah, yeah, you could be an alternate of whoever's available.
Right, I mean, I'm just saying, if Mike wanted to go one night, and then he couldn't make it, I'd fill in for him.
Sure.
Maybe I'm in Switzerland or something, and...
It's fine, I'm not...
Okay, so I'll reach out to you guys.
I, I, I think as long as we end up, like you said, Bill, if, if Mike is away on business, if you go and represent, we have a liaison there that can report back, and so that any allegations of shadiness, or corruption, or tainted votes, or hanging chads can be quickly thrown away and squashed.
Make sure we hold the call, Jonson.
Well, I'm happy to hear, too, that the consultant's going to be taking minutes. I think that gives a, I understand where Ed is coming from, and I can relate to that, but I think in terms of efficiency, it doesn't work well.
Well, and I would just say, we don't negotiate much in a public meeting. I mean, most negotiations are done outside of the public view, just because of what's being discussed on any topic.
But I, but the other piece is, I think it's helpful for people to know that there is a place that they can go to sort of know what's going on.
But, I mean, later on down the road, am I correct when I say this, will be public meetings on this property?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
So they'll be, they'll be able to come in and talk and say what they're going to say, so...
Yeah, I mean, this isn't going to be behind closed doors, and decisions aren't going to be made in secret, in the dark, on candlelight, it's just to facilitate the movement to move forward quicker.
Well, I think that, based on what, what Lisa said, you know, do you want transparency, or do you want efficiency?
You're getting both. You're getting efficiency, you get the transparency.
You're not getting transparency, because people don't have a...
Well, the issue's been, the issue's been be resolved, so we're going to move on to the security camera expansion project. So we have the quotes for the complete project, which includes several locations. And I think it's just a matter of making a motion to expend these funds.
Is that it?
I didn't miss something, I actually showed where they were going, because that's confidential, right?
Yes, it is.
It was part of the second session, I didn't get to...
Yes, it was. And we don't want to tell the crooks all the bad, all the, all the secrets, or else they're not secrets anymore.
So we just make a motion to accept the security camera expansion project as quoted? Is that the quote? That the motion, is that good enough?
And where are we taking the funds? Where are we expending?
And...
Oh, it's from, I'm sorry. Motion to approve security camera expansion project, taking funds from the cable fund. Is that what it is? Cable access fund? What is, what is that called?
The franchise fee fund.
The franchise fee fund, yes.
Okay.
So we have a motion in a second. On the floor, is any discussion on the issue? Yes, Selectman Dunn.
So we're at a grand total now of 78,000?
Yes.
Yes.
So from when we met, it seems like it's quite a bit more.
You guys added all the other buildings.
We added all the buildings and I think when I was adding it up during that executive session, I came in at 75.
Yeah, originally it was just Town Hall, Library and adding some cameras at the police station. And we added South Fire Station, the Highway Department, Bagnell School, aerial views of the pines.
I think.
You guys wanted to do.
Believe it or not, I think that was made at your recommendation that if we're going to do it, let's just do it all now and hit every corner.
I was under the impression it was like, they were going to put those buildings in. The numbers, we were looking at the numbers that day, but that's okay, I mean.
No, 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 we went back out and did a whole tour of the town and looked at every building and everywhere that we should have camera to cover.
So where the money's coming from? Do we have the money in that account? Is the money coming from?
Morton.
I have to actually look that up.
I believe it was 220,000 plus was in that account currently.
Uh, I don't think it's that high at the moment. Just give me one moment, I think I have it somewhere.
I just wondered if it was above that much.
Um.
I thought it was like 190.
200?
Alright, so we had, so it was 171,000, we just got in 25,000. So 196,000 is the current total.
And the money has, we have no problem using the money for this reason?
No, it meets the guidelines.
It meets the guidelines of the cable contract, yes.
Okay.
All set? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Moving right along, we have Comcast cable contract.
So this was Selectman Wood's ideas.
Okay, Selectman Wood, would you like to open the discussion on this?
I would love to.
Alright, then be my guest.
So we've had a letter come talking about the expiration of the current contract next November for our Comcast cable fund account. One of the questions I wanted to talk about was, has that process been started by the cable committee? The second thing I wanted to ask about was, why haven't we looked into live streaming services for the town, which is tied to the Comcast account, I think? And then also, what we have to do to get FiOS to come to town? Oh, I'm not done. I've got a lot more. I have been arguing with Comcast and Xfinity about their programs and their rates and their service for years. And at this point, I have had enough. We are under a monopoly from Comcast in town. We have no other options for high-speed internet. We can get DSL, which is useless. We can get maybe satellite, which is also useless. So as far as internet goes, we are held to whatever Comcast offers us and makes us pay. And I think that trying to get FiOS in town would be a win for the residents to have competition in town, not only for the services and rates, but for better customer service and better options. So I would like to pursue whatever means possible to try and figure out why we can't get Comcast from the town line of Georgetown into a large portion of Groveland.
Verizon.
I'm sorry, FiOS, into Groveland. And I think based on multiple, multiple, multiple conversations of people on the crier, which I read to keep updated with because I like to see what people are saying in town, there would be an overwhelming response of positive yes, that we want to have another option besides Comcast in town. I have talked to some residents from Harvard, Massachusetts, who have actually started a survey themselves about their electric company putting together their own data infrastructure so they don't have to rely on Comcast for data because they've had enough of them as well. I have their survey, anybody who wants to see it. Norwood, Braintree have done just that, created their own infrastructure so they can control the service and the cost of data on high-speed internet in their town.
I think that was possible.
It is possible, yeah, I didn't know it was possible either. So I would like permission from the board to kind of take this on. I ended up having a conversation with State Senator Tarr at the Memorial Day service and his response was, I hear you and good luck because it's not an easy battle. But I don't give up, so I am willing to take this on to try and find a way to get FiOS into town, to give the town residents another option of internet and TV and phone service and not just be held to whatever Comcast throws at us. The end.
So I'm 100% in support of that. I just had always heard that FiOS had no interest in coming to Groveland and that people have asked.
It's a, it's a dollar, right? Is there enough people in town interested in having the service to offset the cost to run the infrastructure? And I think, given the number of people who are on Comcast in town that have had enough of the customer service, because if you talk to anybody who's happy about calling customer service Comcast, I mean, when I call and you have to renegotiate your contract and your package and everything every two years, it's just, it's a waste of time, right?
It costs 300 dollars.
And it's $250 for TV that I honestly don't really watch because I don't like anything on there. I have 1 gig internet speed, which I need for my day job and it's just ridiculous amounts of money for what I get. Now, when I look at advertisements for FiOS, now granted, it's their base package, it's $90, includes everything. So even if you tack on another $60 to that, I'm still saving 100 bucks a month by having FiOS in town. I think it's a win-win for the town. I think the town residents would love it. I think it's a good option. And like I said, I don't give up. So if the board will allow me to pursue this, then I'll, I'll work with Senator Tarr, Representative Mira, and I'll, I'll get ahold of FiOS and ask them, you know, why we can't have it in Groveland.
So, I'm sorry, I would be in support of that. I don't know if people want to discuss or if we just, I'm willing to make a motion because I don't see any downside to that.
No, no, I want to have discussion because I'm fired up.
If that's where you're sewing.
So I make a motion that Selectman Wood be permitted to pursue what options might be available other than Comcast for internet provider or data, I don't know whatever word you use, in Groveland.
Service.
Service.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second. Any discussion on the matter? Selectman Watson.
Discussion, just, I think, this is the charge of the cable TV committee and I think we're, and I'm a member of that committee, Tracy Guilford is the chairman, a couple of other members. And that's part of the charge of the committee, is to come up with and negotiate the contract. As far as the FiOS goes, I think that's a great idea. And there was a, there was a man here a couple of years ago from Verizon. It was actually, it happened when Verizon was on strike. He happened to be here on the wrong night and I, I had asked him about, how do we get Verizon FiOS here, here in town of Groveland? And he said, look, he says, I just live over the line into Bradford, he says, and he says, I can't get it in Bradford and Havre, and he says, before it comes to Groveland, he said, it's going to have to come to Havre to be, to be cost efficient. Georgetown has it, so that was his comments that, so if we entertain it, we should get Havre on board perhaps to, to try to, try to press for it. And the other thought was, it was quite a while back that I had discussion with a member of the Groveland Electric Board, Electric Light Board. And we had done a lot of reading about some of the towns that have their own municipal electric company, they were running the cable TV through the electric company. And apparently the Groveland Electric, he brought it up to the board and apparently the manager wasn't, wasn't enthused about, about doing something like that. But I'd rather, I'd rather pay money to, we're paying to Comcast, I'd rather be paying to the Groveland Electric Company. It'd probably do it cheaper than what, and probably better service than what, what we're getting from, from Comcast. And as an example, every time our cable TV goes down, it's down now, we're, we're not getting the, the audio. It's always Comcast's fault, or at least that's what we're, that's what we're told. So, yeah, I, I'm in agreement that we need another option. It, it is, it is a monopoly, that we really don't have any other options. And, but I, I do think that that's something that the cable TV committee is, is working on under the new contract. And so I think with, with allowing Selectman Wood to, to look into it, I think it's taking some of the responsibility away from the, away from the cable TV committee.
Quick question, Selectman Watson. You said that there's municipal electric companies providing TV service?
Norwood, Braintree, Harvard looking into it.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they provide cable service to them.
Cable service.
And our electric company's awesome and they would do a phenomenal job of managing that if that was something they wanted to do.
Okay.
Those, those municipalities, they're basically, the municipal electric company is running the cable TV. They must be running separate wires and they're, they're handling what Comcast is doing.
Interesting. You all set?
I'm all set.
Selectman Dunn, I think you had.
No, I, I think that's a good idea and I just would like to make sure we keep that option open, that I know we've got some money put into the cable account and we've needed it a few different times. I just wouldn't want to ruin that. You know, and this, granted, we don't want to be taking money and not getting the service, but on the same token, I would like to make sure that we just keep getting the funds.
Well, any, any, any license that we had with a cable provider, we would add a franchise fee and of some percentage. So if you had an additional company, there would be a fee in there as well.
That's all.
The other piece is, at this point, it's exploratory. We wouldn't be doing anything without taking a vote on it anyway.
Wouldn't think so. Selectman Wood, you have.
Yeah, so I read through the contract today, or skimmed through it anyways. And I think the, the percentage right now is 375 or something like that, 3.75. So part of the thing that I would do is look to increase that so we get more money into that account at a minimum when we renegotiate that contract. So we move it to 4% or 4.25, so we have more money going into that. So we have money set aside for technology and infrastructure things. And again, the electric department, I don't know that, that they want to even entertain doing something like this again. I think looking at Harvard and Braintree and Norwood, where their electric departments are doing it or supposedly doing it, haven't gotten that far. I think our electric department would do an outstanding job with that because they do a fantastic job keeping the power on in town. And then as far as the, the cable committee, when was the last time you guys met? What has been done with that cable committee? We're still waiting to get simple things like other towns have, like live streaming and, you know, what is the technical recommendations of that board? Have you looked at the contract? There's milestones that need to be met to renegotiate that contract, which should be ongoing now, had those been done? I'm not a guy who sits around and waits for other people to do their job. If they're not going to do it, then I'll step in and do it.
Maybe what we should do is on a future, as a future agenda item, we should ask the cable advisory committee to come in and speak to us as to where they are in the process, where they're going, when they see it wrapping up.
Well, if you look, I don't know if you have time to look at the contract, but if you look at the contract, there's things that need to be done. And there's timelines where they have to submit stuff back to Comcast so they can start their negotiations back with us. So there's things that need to be in place and working because there's now 12 months.
Do we know?
We have just a little.
And I would just.
We looked at the, we looked at the contract, it's been a while since we've had a meeting. But if you've looked at some of the contracts that have been signed by other, other towns, they're, most of them are less money coming from, for the, for the use of the town, for the franchise. They're, they're not giving as much money as they have done in the past. And one of the reasons is because the cities and towns are using it for something other than to benefit the users of, of the cable TV. And, and we certainly do have some needs here. They, probably about everything over to the cable TV office needs to be updated, along with microphones. We're still getting complaints about, about the audio at all meetings that are held in this room, where they, people have to turn their volume all the way up. So we, we need some new infrastructure there and hopefully, hopefully we can, we, we only got about six months to go before, before we have to negotiate the contract. But, and I don't think in, in the six months, I think it's got to be done by June, six months before it expires in, at the end of the year. But, sure, bring, bring, bring the chairman in in the next meeting or an upcoming meeting and see, see where we're going.
So right now, I think we have a motion on table.
There was a motion in a second, yes.
Well, we still have a discussion, yeah.
I think the discussion is pretty much exhausted.
I think the discussion has morphed into another discussion.
Yeah, so the original motion is to have Selectman Wood explore.
Other options for cable service.
Right, along with Senator Tarr and Representative Mira to see what we can do. So we have had a motion and a second, we've had discussion. So all those in favor of Selectman Wood moving forward? All those opposed? Okay, so we have it 4-2-1.
Can I just comment quickly on that?
But we still request that the cable committee come in?
Absolutely, I mean, I think that's vital because this ball can't be dropped.
So maybe for a future agenda?
It absolutely is a future agenda item. Denise?
Yes, so I do just want to comment because the license does expire midnight, November 28th, 2019. It usually takes several years to go through this negotiation, so we haven't had. We have not had any minutes from the cable TV committee in quite some time. So if they're not actively meeting, they should be actively meeting because yes, six months ahead of time, we should.
Well, they should be meeting like every week.
So as they've identified, we have to meet certain markers and one of which needs to be done six months from the date of this letter, which is in your packet, regarding the performance. They should be reaching out to the public, finding out if there are any complaints, compiling those. I mean, there's, it's a very lengthy process. I went through it myself in Swambskitt. So I would say the December 10th meeting is really when we should have them in because then.
Yep.
We're really within a year now.
I'd say December 10th and then maybe every other meeting after that, just make sure this ball is rolling in the correct direction.
And I would just remind you all that Bill Hewer, our town council, I think he mentioned it to you and I relayed this to you in the past, he is one of two attorneys in the state specialized in negotiating cable contracts. He is not the attorney that the town used in the past, but I would highly recommend him as we would get the.
Definitely.
Current municipal rate that he charges us on all of his work.
Who have we used in the past?
They used a separate attorney. I don't know.
Whose choice is it, whose choice is it to go outside?
I, I believe the cable TV committee chose, and I could look it up, they used a different attorney in the past.
Maybe they could tell us that when they come, what would be the basis for that?
Yes, because otherwise I would recommend, obviously Bill does a lot of work with us. He would do a good job negotiating on our behalf.
Well, if we're all about saving money, that's what we should be doing, right? Yes, Selectman Wood?
Just to clarify, when I was talking to Senator Tarr, this is not going to be a quick process.
Oh, I.
This is going to be.
It's not going to be.
Months, years, but like I said, I don't give up, so I'm on, I'm in for it.
And some of the, some of the, what you're experiencing, Selectman Watson, or other towns are experiencing the lowering of rate, I wonder if that's due to, they've got a monopoly. They don't really have any competition, so take it or leave it, right? Take this rate or we don't give you service and then.
Well, and they pass the franchise fee right on to the customers. It's not coming out of their pocket. They're adding it on as a separate charge to every bill. So it's not, they're, they're not losing money in this.
So when you look at your bill and you can't understand it, that's why.
Right.
Or when you look at your bill and it's a $5 franchise fee, we know what committee to go to to find out why that went so high.
What I'd like to see, I don't think it's possible, but I'd like to see if we could, obviously as Mike Wood said, this isn't something that's going to be quick. And, and I'm not sure that we can sign a contract for, I'd like to do, sign a contract for like three years, but I don't think that's possible.
I don't think they'll.
I think it has to be 10 years and that, or maybe a, set it into the contract allowing for somebody else to come in, leave it open-ended. But it's all, all set for negotiation, so.
Well, it sounds like we have the perfect onsite counsel to assist with that.
Yeah, and I don't think there's an exclusivity clause in here. It actually says non-exclusivity of license. I don't think they can require in their contract to be the only provider. So you could enter into a 10-year contract and if three years down the road Verizon comes in, you would have a, an additional contract with them.
And it's, the, the point is that whether the municipality signs a contract for services doesn't mean that another service can't come in town that the residents could use, right? I mean, just.
They, no, they can't come in unless the town allows them through a contract.
Right, right, but the, the contract with Comcast doesn't mean that somebody else can't come in and provide a service.
Oh, correct, correct.
Because that'd be Sherman antitrust or whatever it is. So, yeah, I mean. So, yeah, I mean, I'm on.
Okay.
Fired up.
All right, so I will add them to the December 10th. I'll reach out to Tracy.
I will be here.
Excellent.
Our last meeting, I'll be here.
I'll be in London.
Okay, moving right along. We have old or unfinished business because we've already taken care of votes of the board. So old or unfinished business will start at my right-hand side of the table. Selectman Watson, any old or unfinished business?
I have nothing.
Selectman Dunn?
I already had asked earlier, one of them was the highway commissioner's position. It sounds like that's moving forward. And the other one was, I was asked in a previous meeting through Denise to take a look at the Christmas, the gentleman, I guess, had gone out of business or something downtown and what have you. So I did a little bit of work and got some pricing, sent it over to Denise. We're going to be on the budget as far as the Christmas decorations and what have you, and we found a tree for down on the square, but we are still looking for an 18 to 20-foot tree to be donated for Town Hall if anyone in the town has one. And maybe we could put on our website or something, but we're in a desperate need of an 18 to 20-foot tree for up front.
Or if anyone knows where to buy one, well, we just don't even know where they have them.
Well, I'll work on that again tomorrow and get this after the...
I wonder if somebody from Groveland would donate one? Isn't there plenty of big trees on...
They were donated last year, the two trees.
There's actually a farm right on School Street.
But I don't know about that size. Even the business that Bill spoke to said they're having trouble getting them for other towns for their...
They can't get it from Middleton. They can't get Middleton's tree this year.
How about the one down on Middle Street, down in, where's that? It's going toward, is it Newbury? What's Newbury? Middle Street, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, do they have one they want to get rid of?
I don't know. I know it's a good day out in Newbury.
Just going to cut it down.
Provide a raid. Get a dump there.
You bring the truck or bring the chainsaw.
So if anyone has a tree, we'd love to accept a donation. But we will continue to look and see if we can find one in the meantime.
And I think that's it on that.
Selectman Carpenter?
Nothing, thank you.
Selectman Wood?
Old business? No, I think I'm good.
I did. Personnel handbook. How have we, have we got to the point where we're going to see a draft anytime soon?
So they're meeting tomorrow morning, I believe.
Again...
They have two meetings posted. I just looked this afternoon. They have a meeting tomorrow morning and then a meeting next Monday night. I'm assuming they're planning, it says on there to finalize their proposal, so I'm assuming they're close. But that's where things stand.
And again, I want to calm people's fears out there about this. This is not meant to, as the board of selectmen's way to get at people. This is an attempt for Groveland to get into the present time so that we're competitive in our hiring and we can retain the good people that we have. This will only affect you in a negative way if you're not what I would call a good employee. If you are, you really have nothing to worry about. This is just a benefit to you and a benefit to the town to be able to be competitive in increasingly competitive world that we live in and to be able to retain the good employees we have. We don't want them walking out the door because our benefits are not commensurate with what other municipalities are offering. It doesn't do us any good to have labor and skill and brain drain constantly flowing out of our town offices into other municipalities.
Right, I will just say, we're going to have a tough time. We're going to have to have discussions offline about a highway superintendent. There's no way we're going to attract somebody to be able to actually offer a position with zero vacation time. It's just, no one's going to transfer here, so... We have zero vacation time for new hires. That's why we've been trying to get this policy redone for years.
Can't that be entered into his contract?
Yeah, they could be negotiating in contract, right?
Negotiating in his contract?
Well, there wouldn't be a separate contract. It's something we could speak to about negotiating, yes.
Right, when we negotiate his contract to come work here, we negotiate that in, wouldn't it?
Yes, he would not have a separate contract, but yes, we could negotiate vacation time, similar to what we did with the town planner. But that's one of the hardships we have is...
But you see, it's all part of the systemic problem.
Trying to attract new hires with zero, coming here, you know, leaving an established position, coming here with zero time.
I'm saying, I'm not looking for a separate contract for his vacation. I'm saying when we hire him and his guidelines are hiring this, his our person, we build in some vacation time, part of that.
Yes, I understand, but that position does not have a separate contract under the law.
Right.
The law does not allow municipalities to just give out contracts.
That person's going to fall...
That's why we have, that's why we have a personnel policy that's supposed to define those benefits.
And that person's going to have to fall in...
We will have to make an exception...
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
...for positions like this because we're not going to get someone to take the job.
But ideally, we need to be consistent across the board.
Correct.
Ideally, we should have a policy that we can refer to and say, all new employees get X, Y, and Z. We're competitive with other municipalities. We have something equal value to offer. And this is why you should stay or come here.
I'm on, I'm on to the point where you just said we're going to have a hard time hiring this person. I'm just saying when we hire him, do we have the option of giving them...
Yes, you all will have the ability to override the personnel policy and offer benefits.
It would be like a hardship issue that if we can't find a competitive candidate, it's a hardship and that might be a basis to DVE. But I would definitely not want to be in a position where we're doing that on a regular basis. It should be just part of the policy.
Right.
Right, and we've struggled, all of our new hires in the last several years. I mean, they come in with no time, so...
You're right, and that makes us absolutely non-competitive with anyone around us. And there is absolutely no reason to apply for a position in Groveland when you could apply for similar positions with better benefits. So we have to be competitive. That's why this personnel handbook that needs to be rewritten, updated, revised, has to be done. We can't continue to push this can down the road anymore.
Yes, so I will follow up in the morning. I'll see them when they're meeting tomorrow morning and find out where they are, but I know they're close.
Okay. I saw, the last time I was down the pines, it looked like somebody had marked out some squares. Is that for my long-called-for speed bumps, maybe?
Yes, so they're supposed to be, and I don't know what the weather will be like. They're supposed to be digging them out tomorrow. So they are doing the asphalt ones like we talked about when they finished the curb work, so that is supposed to take place tomorrow. Again, whether or not the weather holds, I don't know what it'll be. They can actually dig down a little bit so that they can, so that it won't, I guess, come up at the surface. They'll go in and then build the speed bump from there.
Well, at this point, I'll be honest with you, just about all the activities down there are done for the season, if not for the year. So if we can get them by spring...
Yeah, but if we don't do it now, I'd rather get them done.
Yeah, you'd probably never get it done.
It's been in the pipeline, I'd rather get it done.
Yeah. The boats, I guess the season is over for the rowing. I know most people look at that, and I haven't been down there today, but when I was down there yesterday, it was still there. Most people look at their trailer and see boats. I'm a father of four children. I look at that and say, wow, that's a neat place to climb. So if they're done, can we get that out of there and...
Yeah, I can certainly talk to them.
I just see that as a place where young boys, I know young boys, I've got three of them, I was once one myself. It's just an attraction for them. And I don't want to see anybody get hurt needlessly. And the other boat that looked to be damaged during the windstorm when the fence came down, are there any plans to take care of that and the removable fence? It looks like it just stacked up there.
So right now, we can't do anything down there because the river is too high. It's actually a dangerous situation for removing the docks, dealing with the debris.
No, 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 I'm talking about the temporary fence that was around the rowing boat?
Oh, the rowing, I don't know. I don't know what they, what their plans are.
It came down during the windstorm. One of the boats looked like it was damaged, and then they just stacked the pieces of fencing one on top of the other.
Okay.
If there's any intention for that. And as far as old and unfinished business, I think that is it for me. Other items not reasonably anticipated, time of posting? Does anybody have one of those? Okay, we'll move right on. Selectmen's reports. Selectman Wood?
Nothing to report.
Yeah, we just gave you a new one, so you'll maybe have something to report next time.
I don't know about next time.
Selectman Dunn?
Nope, just kind of waiting to get to town meeting.
Any developments on your business development? Any progress, anything you want to share with us? Any, I know you've been working like a dog on this.
That's my big one. I need another month or so of time to focus on it. I've just been working, so I'll start working on that in the next month. Now knowing what's in front of us tonight, you know, maybe we can expand on that with them.
Want to lend a hand if you need a hand? I think it's a really important thing. It's great work you're doing, so if you need some help, give me a call, I'll come over. Selectman Watson?
No, nothing, nothing to report.
Okay, unfortunately, today's high school building committee also coincided with the board of selectmen meeting tonight, so I don't really have anything to report, only because I'm not there. So I'll have to pass on that myself. Correspondence, we have minutes from the October 15th, 2018. We have minutes from October 29th, 2018. We have a thank you letter from the Conservation Commission to Larry Kelly of Kendall Construction.
I just, I think this is, reading this letter, I think this is worthy enough to read into the record so that the townspeople know if you give me a minute or two to read that. The letter that the Conservation Commission wrote to Mr. Kelly.
I read that myself, and I agree with you. I think it's worth reading out loud just to express our gratitude to the gentleman for all his hard work and efforts, so please.
Mr. Larry Kelly, Kendall Construction, 934 Salem Street, Groveland. Dear Mr. Kelly, I want to acknowledge your most generous donation to the work of the Groveland Conservation Commission for our efforts to remove weeds from Johnson's Pond. The commission had planned to remove weeds from the pond to make it more accessible for canoe and kayak access. In 2017, we received community preservation funds towards the project. In addition, the Massachusetts Legislature granted us additional funds. After obtaining all the required permits, we hired a company to remove some of the weeds at the foot of VZ Park. When the company arrived this past August, we had the highway department tractor in place to remove the weeds from the edge of the pond. Unfortunately, as we learned that day, the tractor was not large enough for the job. When I called you to explain your dilemma, you immediately volunteered to bring a large excavator to the site and had it there the same day. You left the excavator on site for a full four weeks while we're removing, while the weed removal was ongoing. The commission wants to thank you for the gift of your time to deliver and pick up the tractor and the use of the machine for our project. Without this gift, our efforts to begin clearing Johnson's Pond of weeds would have failed. You and your company are a true example of corporate responsibility and generosity to the town of Groveland. Signed, Mike Dempsey, Chair, carbon copy to the board of selectmen. And I think that was a noble effort. Maybe, maybe somebody could recommend Larry Kelly for a volunteer of the month for that. Mike, thank you.
You a Groveland resident, Mike? Oh, well, there goes the volunteer of the month.
No, it didn't say that has to be a resident, does it?
Well, we try to, my idea was trying to reward the residents. We haven't had one for a while. Mike, what's going on? We need one. Come on, man. Try me up some business for me.
I have an idea I'll talk to you about.
Also, in correspondence, we have additional information from Water and Sewer Superintendent Tom Cusick regarding 23 School Street project. We now have finance director's time.
Just a few quick things for you. The land sale and land swap that we've been talking about for quite some time was completed and filed at the registry on Thursday, November 1st, so those are done. This Thursday, I received word this morning that this Thursday, November 15th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, will be a flu clinic for all ages here in this meeting room. And a reminder to our residents that next, sorry, Monday, the 26th, is a special town meeting at 7:00 PM at Bagnell School. The warrant is on our website and hard copies are available in the lobby of Town Hall. There are nine articles. If people have questions, feel free to reach out. The Eagle Tribune will be writing an article next week identifying the articles and providing some information. I spoke with them today. But again, we need 100 registered voters for Monday, November 26th, at our special town meeting. That's all I have for you.
Okay. Selectmen's time. We'll begin with Selectman Watson.
The only thing I have is pulling in here tonight, the veto room was lit up again. It really looks fantastic. And you can see what, you can see the, what's on display in there. Great idea, and I hope that continues to be lit up at night.
Selectman Dunn?
I got twisted a little bit, but I kind of should have done under old business. Just, just wondering how the football fields over the pines are coming. I should have asked and I didn't. And also the pump system over there as well?
Football fields have been trashed.
So the, we put out proposals for the irrigation system to draw from the river, and they came in significantly higher than what the estimates were because I do not believe the estimates took into consideration prevailing wage. So those came back probably a month ago now, and I don't know. Actually, the Recreation Committee is meeting tonight, so I don't know if they will discuss their next steps, but nothing has happened.
All right, and the last thing, I was talking to you, you and I were talking in your office before last meeting, and the bathrooms seemed like they were coming along great, and you were getting down to your last phases on that.
Yep.
Which is good. And that was pretty much the pie for all.
Selectman Carpenter?
I have two things. One is that I had the opportunity to attend the VZ Art and Wine Fest, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the people that volunteered to make that a really wonderful event. And I don't know, Mike, you guys did pretty well, I think. And then secondly, I want to thank the town clerk and anybody who volunteered to make, I think the election was probably, we had great voter turnout, and I think it went successfully as far as I know, so I want to thank them for their efforts.
The volunteers. Say something, right?
Yeah.
Selectman Wood?
Yeah, two quick things. I want to thank Mr. Tuttle for a great Veterans Day service that was Saturday. That was one of the better ones that I've been to, especially letting one of the World War II veterans talk and share his experience from World War II. That was really a good ceremony that he put together, even though the Kentucky Band was off doing somewhere, another ceremony that day, but I really enjoyed being there for that one. And secondly, I have been working, Representative Mira, for seven months now, on getting the lines painted on 113 Main Street. This came up during the meet the candidates night in April. One of the residents asked about getting the lines painted because it's hard for them or the elderly people to be able to see the white and the yellow lines when it's miserable weather out and dark and rainy. So we happened to be able to get the yellow lines painted. Still working to try and get an update on when we'll get the white lines painted. I know Ms. Ruth Race has been emailing me and asking me when we can expect that to happen, and I keep asking Lenny when this is going to happen and get an update from the DOT. So like I said, I don't give up, so I'm still working on getting that done because this was a request that came up during candidates night, and I took it upon myself to take the charge.
All set?
Yep.
I just have a couple of things myself. One is, you kind of stole my thunder there, Selectman Wood. I was truly honored and humbled to be asked to speak at the Veterans Day event last Saturday. They truly are inspiring men and women. The only regret I have is that we only have one day a year to honor these veterans and not many more, because what they do is really special. What they do allows us to do what we do, and enough cannot be said of what they do day in and day out, how they risk their lives, how their families endure great hardships while they're away protecting us and our country, and I'm very thankful that I was asked to go. The other thing is, the Fill the Cruiser campaign, what a success. The generosity of the residents of Groveland never ceases to amaze me. They had to abandon the Cruiser early on and move on to the Council on Aging bus, which they rapidly filled as well. council on aging bus, which they rapidly filled as well. I dare say, next year, we might have to rent an 18-wheeler to hold the generosity that this town has in its hearts. It was really overwhelming to see how people really came to the need of some of the less fortunate residents in this town.
And it was a miserable day out that day, too.
It was a terrible day, and I heard from officers that we had kids riding up on their bicycles with donations. It just tells you the spirit of this town, and the children aren't doing this on their own. They're learning it from their parents. So I commend the parents for teaching their children a great, great life lesson, that we're not all as lucky as, as we could be. And one last thing. Next week is Thanksgiving Day holiday. The town offices will be closed Thursday and Friday in observance of the holiday.
And we'll be closing two hours early on Wednesday.
And there'll be a early closing, two hours on Wednesday. I hope everybody has a happy and safe holiday. Hopefully spend it with your loved ones, people closest to you. And hopefully we all get, get through it in one piece, not eat too much turkey. And that's about it. Have a great holiday. Look forward to seeing you on the 26th of November at 7:00 at Bagnell. We have very important business to conduct. Please, please get 100 people there. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn at 9:22?
Second.
A motion to second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Meeting over.